Hey everyone. Time is 7:03. I'd like to officially call our meeting reporter Kathy and please do a roll call. Okay, Simmons?
Present.
Nelson?
Present.
Briggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Paredes?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Or. Here and the floor for actually they're all here and I just want to remind all board members since we are being recorded to just speak into the mic so the audience can hear you if we can be officially recorded. So we will start this meeting this evening with a special board education meeting specifically to talk about budget overview. Ms. Bell. I'm sorry, I have to do a roll call first. I'm sorry.
Open the floor to a public meeting with a roll.
Simmons?
Open the floor to a public meeting with a roll.
Okay, I'd like to officially open the floor to a public meeting specifically to talk about budget. Okay, Paredes?
Here.
Paredes?
Present.
Huckabee?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Simmons?
Present.
Blackman?
Here.
Or. Present. You're wrong. Okay.
Hold on. We're here.
Yeah, we should have had to say yes.
It's a yes or no. It's a yes or no.
It's a yes or no?
But I'm glad everybody's here.
Now.
Here.
Here.
Here. Make a motion for a public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to open the floor for a public hearing to discuss the budget.
So.
Need a second. Second. Paredes, Huckabee, Alme. Can you please do a roll call? Okay, Briggs?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Or. President. Please go ahead, Ms. Bell. Okay. We are not going to get into detail on the budget as we were in the last time. You've all had the book. We've done a couple of presentations here. I've met with several of you individually. We're going to go over and read and then we're going to kind of touch on something else that became a hot topic, at least it's a little part of my community has been and I'm sure because I know I've heard from a couple of you that it is here too. So let's start with the budget. Since August, we have made two adjustments to the budget. The first one was the evidence-based funding which we discussed in a little more detail at the last meeting. So we have added that additional $900,000 into the budget of the general state aid line. And I have adjusted the property tax revenues. The number in total remains the same. It's just shifted amongst the funds. So that document was also attached in board docs for you. Mostly what it did was shift monies from tour immunity and transportation into the education fund. Right, I just want to stop you. We didn't, I didn't get it. Michigan didn't get it either. What we have to board that? It's. You mean under that? Under that? Mm-hmm. Right there on. Are you in public or are you in private? Under, I have information that I have. I mean, under that. So it's under information, I got it? Right. Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, so the total remains the same. So the only actual change in the entire budget document is the additional $900,000 to the general state aid. So what did that do for us? It changed your state number. This is the number that went up, about $900,000 to increase here. Budget over budget here, you're looking at a less than 1% increase on your revenue side. Okay? On your expenditure side, you're looking at practically a flat budget here once over net. Okay? So with these revenues and those expenses of which we've gone through the detail and they're already, you're looking at a half a million dollar surplus. That is without the construction. Okay? Then you take the $2 million in construction, you end up with a $1.5 million deficit. But again, we're not going to call that an operating deficit. Those are by time extensions. Yes?
Should that really be including instead of excluding?
Actually not. It should say excluded and the reason is capital projects is capital projects fund. There was a whole $36,000 left in that fund from the bond issuance that we did. I use the remaining, reducing the remaining $36,000 so it's not even included in the $2 million, the additional $36,000. That fund is now officially closed. It was used for the partnership year high addition and all the rest of the life safety that we had written for and now the rest of these projects are being done either under the O and M fund or the life safety fund. Okay, and those are included in that $2 million number there. Which leads you with an estimated ending fund balance of just shy of $30 million at the end of this year. On the budget document itself, on the very front page, in the box in the right-hand corner, it says, "Unbalanced budget, however, a deficit reduction plan is not required at this time." What the state forum does is it takes just your four operating funds and takes a look at your revenues and your expenditures, compares them, and comes up with what your absolute either balanced budget or deficit position is. Ours happens to be a deficit position of $1.4 million. The reason that a deficit reduction plan is not required, what the formula does is it takes this number and it multiplies by three, which will give you this $4.3 million number. You have to have fund balances of at least that $4.3 million, otherwise you have to do a deficit reduction plan. With $24 million in the bank clear that we don't have to worry about doing a deficit reduction. But that's why it says what it does. Now, the good news is within, and I'm still playing with this because we're talking about the levy and with that change in the ed fund tax rate going away, the maximum extension, I think we're going to be able to put our revenues into the appropriate fund, education, and we'll be able to wipe out that unbalanced budget, however, number next year and hoping that it will say balanced budget. That's going to be some playing with the. All right. Are there any questions on the budget? Anything that we've gone through in prior meetings or this one that you are, just making sure you are ready to take a vote on the budget?
I have a question. So with this budget, it is predicated, if I'm understanding everything that I've seen and what you are saying, levy is a part of this.
Yes.
And with, oh, with, um, with that, what we were saying, without the construction, you end up in a surplus.
Correct.
Again, inclusive of the levy. With, with, uh, construction, we end up at about a $1.5 million deficit. So, the question that I have to ask is if for some reason a levy, let's just say a levy did not exist or we did not do the levy, would we need that levy to open up schools come at this time next year?
So if the property tax levy went away completely, would we be able to open up schools next year?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, but with only one year elimination.
When you say that, do we just bear up where I'm talking and they try to just do what you mean by that?
Does the levy go away for one year or does it go away instantly, like forever? If the property tax levy went away forever, you get one good year out and maybe not. Majority of your revenues are property taxes.
So again, if we didn't levy this year, we could open up schools next year and still have the help we deserve.
Yeah, I gotta make sure I understand your question. Zero levy, zero dollars, nothing coming in at all or you know, a value increase?
Well, we're saying the levy because without the levy, we would get just the property taxes.
Am I, am I correct? The levy is the property taxes.
But when you're levying, levy put in for a levy and at the highest percentage rate of what we can get, am I understanding this correctly? Is this correct? If we don't do that, if we don't do it, I'm saying for any year.
So freeze the levy?
Freeze the levy. That's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Freeze the levy. The limit of the levy.
No, not a limit.
Freeze the levy. Okay. Because there's a huge difference there.
Okay.
Could we open up to freeze the levy?
Yeah.
Yes.
But we have nothing to reserve.
Actually, we can talk about that a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, we have other questions on budget before we travel down this path. There's other topics I want to talk about. Go ahead.
So I just want to clarify, this one includes the expenditures for the capital?
Yes. Not next year. Not the things that we're talking about for next years yet. No, that's just basically everything that was happening this summer.
Yeah.
So, let's go to this.
Can you close this?
I, because I made this right on it. I know I was at a party on Friday night and this is pretty much the top of the conversation. Okay, and then I woke up the next morning and I have an email. So this is, this is what everybody's talking about. And the conversations kind of goes something like this, holy cow, did you get your assessment? Mine went up 20%. I can't afford to pay another 20% on my property tax bill. What is the school going to do with all that money that they're taking? They're increasing it by 20%. And I thought there was a property tax. We're God's green, I believe that property tax. Let's talk about that a little bit more, okay? Because this is very confusing to a lot of people and I probably spent the, that's the majority of my Friday night explaining it. So. Let's just assume these are our taxpayers. Okay, we've got free residents, we've got some businesses. That's their market value of their property. They're assessed at a level, residents at 10%, the commercial at 25%. When you multiply that out, you end up with your assessed value. Then Cook County puts on this mystical number called a multiplier, which we will get into further when we actually do the property tax. So I'm going to fly through this a little because I want you to understand clearly what the triennial assessment does. So, once you multiply by the multiplier, you get your equalized assessed valuation. Isn't that wonderful? The way my numbers work out so quickly.
It is.
So, we end up with $100,000 worth of total property. Okay? The school district puts on levy. Let's just say that the rate was 1%. So on that $100,000, we levy $1,000. Okay? Spread out amongst those, you get 10% of the bill goes to, you know, those of the visuals, 50%. Very simple. Okay? Thanks. The next year, property tax cap. Okay? Let's assume the property value stays the same because in a triennial, for about two years, it'll stay the same. You know, like, if I change this, I'll lose the multiplier. So your assessed value stays the same. Let's assume your EAB stays absolutely the same. What you put on is CPI. That's the tax cap. It no longer has anything to do with assessment. You are able to levy 2% more or CPI, whatever it happens to be, over the prior year's assessment. So you can put on an additional 2% on that $1,000 and now you're getting $1,020. In total, that is all the district can levy by law. So what does it do? It changes the rate to 1.02. Okay? But, we're in a triennial assessment here. So let's assume that every one of those properties increased by 20%. So I increased all those EABs 20%. I can still only levy $1,020, 2%. So what does it do? It reduces the rate. The rate was wrong. So when you have an assessment year where the rate were, like we have been living in, where the assessment clawed in, our rate went up. Now we're having the exact opposite. The assessments are starting to go back up, your rate is going to go down because the only thing you can levy is CPI. The rate is a phony number. It's back into CPI is what matters. Okay? So, that's what happens. Everybody's bill increases by 2% if everyone was assessed an additional 20%. That's not what happens in a triennial or any year for that matter. What happens is you've got properties that are assessed at different varying rates. Okay? So most of us make a 20%, but there's going to be a few that are. There's going to be a few that are more. There's going to be a few that are less. So, this is exactly what you just saw. Okay? 2% across the board, change it. I highlighted two properties down there. So what if one of our residents actually was assessed something a little less? They're only assessed a 10%. And our business was more to 20%. They went up to $65,000 for messes. Our total base actually increases to $124,000. I can still only put on $1,020. Your rate actually goes down a little bit because your base went up $4,000. But then look what it does to the percent increases. It messes them all up. Because it doesn't matter that I can only put on it, you can only levy 2%, it's about what your property did in relationship to your neighbors and everyone else in the taxing body. That's what really determines whether your property tax bill goes up or down around CPI. Does that make sense? A little bit. So that's the assessment question. So when people come in and go like, oh my God, my, my property went up 20%, my tax bill is going to go up 20%, it's not. It might not be 2%, it might be less, it might be more, but it's not going to be 20.
So if we're going up for levy and you're going to see we're, we're trying to max out what we can levy that year, we're really just, really.
You can make up another question.
We're making up the difference at the 2% because otherwise.
So CPI this year is 2.1.
Because otherwise we would lose, um, total dollars coming in.
You'll lose, what it'll be is you always, you're putting on CPI over the prior year's extension. So, to this question, let's say that it was $1,000, okay? You can levy that $1,020. If you don't want, you want freeze, you don't have to take that additional 20. But then remember, the year after, you're still back to that $1,000. That, that additional 20 goes away and it's a cumulative effect. Because you lose the ability to levy on that additional amount. It's always CPI over the prior year's extension. Okay? So what's going to go on? Um, I'm going to present levy on the 23th October. Okay, this is kind of just a preview because, you know, this is absolutely the talk of the town and as well it should be. Okay? Um, I'll be available then. Any questions, answers, anytime through the 23rd of November. And whatever we want to do. Okay, this is a confusing topic. December 11th, you will adopt the levy, whatever that need be, and that'll have to be some conversations that we have. Has to be filed by the last Tuesday of this month. It's happened to be the 26th. I find out filing the 12th or 13th, it will be adopted on the 11th. The first installment of that levy will be in the spring of 2018. It will not be a percentage of a real bill, it isn't 55% of last year's bill. That's what the first installment always is. Cook County doesn't have time to calculate all the bills yet. The second installment then will be whatever that final bill is less the first installment. Remembering that the first installment will be this year's budget, second installment will be next year's budget. Anything else?
So, I guess my, my next question, and I know you've done this before, um, my, my next question was this, since we have until that time to deal with the actual levy itself. But we need to approve a budget, or not approve a budget either way, today. You're looking for that answer today.
I'm not looking for a levy answer today. Remember, a budget's a program. It can change.
But the levy is a part.
It is, but remember, half of that levy is last year's, the second installment. And the first installment doesn't change no matter what you do. It'll always be 55% of last year's bill. So the numbers that you have in that budget book, no matter what you do on this levy, don't change. Next year's numbers don't change.
Right, that's what we're counting about.
Good. Don't make him, I can see it.
No.
I don't, I have a question. I assume we're going to discuss this in a broader form, but first, obviously, this budget, um, possibly has dollars that they cut out of the budget. I'm sure we can find some, but, um, you know, a lot of discussion about that. I don't know if there's a need for further discussion now, but maybe we can just actually cash it out as long as we're possible.
At that point, I have a motion. Both, sorry, anyone?
I have another question. So $900,000 that you presented, brought up, general state aid, is that based, that's based on?
The evidence-based.
The evidence-based, based on?
Correct.
And that's for more recent, as likely to receive?
Yes, and it doesn't include any of the new dollars that are supposed to be going into the formula. We haven't seen those calculated yet. So that is the absolute minimum that we will receive. There, there will probably be more because we are.
So essentially, the $100,000 of this is that, um...
So the 5.3 million becomes 6.2.
Are you aware of Anthony, the Lewis neighbor, Anthony Lewis's calculations that he came up with at the state of Ohio?
I have not seen it.
And I have seen. And I, I, I really would like to share with you that I would shortly, shortly, when I say shortly, like 10 minutes, if they're coming into this, can be dragged here.
There's a lot of things being calculated right now.
And he basically sent this to the representatives, a lot of the municipal agents, and then not considering the interest. And that's, that's my concern.
For the evidence-based?
From the evidence, it's my.
Higher or lower, because I'm afraid.
About close to $100,000.
For this year?
For this district. And I couldn't drive it to us, but I, I think it's worth looking at.
Well, yeah, I mean, and I don't know how he came up with it. I do know that currently, the state board that is paying on the 6.2, we've already got repayment space last year.
And it's based on what we said we did from Bloom to Chicago Heights, Boston District, 1617. Yeah, $112,777.
Is that the new money though, or the base funding?
Well, I asked for what was most relevant. And this is what I received. So that's why I wanted to share.
Absolutely. I, I, my guess is that's the calculation on the increased 315 million of this aid coming our way, distributed by tiers. It is not the base funding. But that would be my guess. I haven't seen anything otherwise. I haven't seen any more questions.
We want, that's still in the S31 bill, so I'd like to share.
Awesome. I want to see every, I want to see everything that's out there and truly, this is still up for grabs, guys, and, and from what we're understanding is there's going to be a trailer bill, um, that's going to be attached to this coming up because there's some things that they're already finding that weren't quite right for the bill and they're trying to figure out what they do with this. So we know there's going to be a trailer that we're switching.
A lot of witnesses.
So. I think a lot of, like, I'm sorry, any public comments or questions, Ms. Bell?
Good evening, board members, members of the administration, um, community members, um, 1617. My name is Nathan Magard. First of all, I like, love the new openness of the layout. It's the first time back since the spring. Um, and welcome to all the board members. My comment relates directly to the budget. Just, I think it's pressing on everyone's mind. But just certainly, I'm hopeful that the board, administration will deliberate. Capital projects as it relates to next year's budget. If it's appropriate to table those, or if it isn't appropriate to table those, obviously proceed, but really kind of take a critical eye to this budget. And just understand that, yeah, the community, uh, just got rocked with, um, yeah, what, what is some interesting news, uh, taxing, so, um, certainly just to belabor it, to kind of see it in everyone's eyes. It's, you know, kind of a game changer a little bit, and so just, uh...
What is it that you see in everyone's eyes? I'm sorry?
Well, that you all are going to be diligent in terms of reviewing the budget and the considerations that are, um, that may factor into maxing out, um, a levy if that's, you know, you have to do a capital project, for example, at some cost and that, and red quickly, $5 million will put us at a deficit of 1.5 million. Wayne what doing a levy actually means. And so that's something that, as I said, I can kind of see that, you know, this isn't going to just, just kind of be a sign on.
Are you equating the levy that we may ask for in December with a capital project of a levy and a half dollars?
Yes, what I, what I guess.
Those two are two disconnected items.
No, they, they very much are. However, the levy does go into the budget as a running line.
Correct, yes.
Right, so if that's the case, and there is a capital project that goes in an expense, significant expense, by the way.
It's below the line.
It's below the line, but at the end you have a deficit or surplus.
And you're trying to do $30 million in fund allowances.
Right, but your running, your running balance, right, your running balance for this year, if I read that correctly, would put us at a 1.5 million dollars deficit for this year?
Well, just this year for the capital project, but you're still sitting on after that project is over.
Flush with, flush with hedge, right? So, that's, that's actually my point. If the capital project is not a consideration, right, levy or not raising the levy, I'm not talking about eliminating the full levy, but raising the levy. If that's not a consideration, then hopefully the board will take that into consideration as you all kind of deliberate whether or not we need to extend the levy. Now, we're, I mean, you have to kind of think about both things when you all go to a co-assessment, sure. Even though we're disconnected.
I don't think we're going to discuss anything about the levy or the budget co-assessment. Everything's got to know the assessment.
Okay, I, I. That's it, that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Magard. Any other questions? Yes?
Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah, I noticed, I was on the member board a while ago, so Arnold Crater, uh, I live in Boswell, I was a former member of the board, and I, I understand the levy process and it, but I just, uh, when you guys get to discussing this part, I, I would like you to consider the fact that since 2008, almost 100% of the homes in Boswell have been foreclosed or bank-owned sales. And if, and it's just focusing on this district is fine, but you got to think of this, this 12 to 15 taxing bodies on our tax bills that are all levying to the 4.9% so they can give a maximum CPI. So it's okay just for this district to increase by 20 bucks. When you have that times 12, it, it actually is impacting the district and, um, you may, you may get your increase now, but over time you're going to impact the people that come into the community. So you should, you should, when you think about the levy and maybe giving people a break because we're getting it from all sides. So, uh, that's all the thing I have to say. Just consider. So that's all the thing I have to say, is just consider the homes and the fact that people are still losing their homes. Fossum is still trailing at like a two thousand one rate in terms of appreciation. And I, I know the assessors office and, and the board review's office, they use Zillow for their appreciation. It's not really tied, they don't use the regression program that they're supposed to use. If you saw the news on Burios over the last couple of weeks, there's a total disparity in, in the, the market values of the homes and other areas of Cook County. And I even had the, you know, the Policy Institute do a study for me on the Southland, and it basically shows that we're headed for a very bad place. Actually, bankrupt, you, I don't want to use those words. But there's some interesting things going on with all of the taxing bodies. And if this one tax body has an opportunity to give taxpayers, taxpayers a break and still maintain your level of, of, you know, your fiduciary responsibility levels, it was just considered, that's all.
Thank you, thank you both for your comments. Thankfully, we still have time to continue to talk about this. I think as we, with all of this sort of marinating over the coming days, I think the board itself probably has more questions and comments, and we figure out the best way to continue to have the conversation here before it's time for us to actually vote on the levy. We will take, and agree, so we will think very carefully about our capital improvement budgets, and we don't know what those numbers actually will look like for next year, but we can take all of these into consideration. Thank you. I motion, motion please, to close this portion of our meeting, the budgetary increase.
So who?
Mr. Gray, Simon, Mr. Hugley, both of you. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Flackman?
Yes.
Hugley?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We will now move to item number three, which are audience comments. We do have two people who signed up, mine is Mr. Laguardia.
That was mine, you know, that was mine. Yeah, okay.
And then the next person to get this, Winnie Davis Key.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mr. Davis Key, and I'm comparing to a representative on behalf of our executive director, Kim Sally, on Young Life, Packers. I am here. This is my colleague, we're both on the board, my name is Dennis Davis Key, this is Stephanie. And the reason I have to be here today is that I don't know if a lot of you even know who Young Life is, but let me just give you a quick, a quick overview of the organization. Yes, Young Life, Young Life has been around seventy-five years in the United States along, but not only serving the U.S. but also in United countries. We've been in the South suburban area for forty-five years. And in the last five years, we've approached over a thousand years of that young life and reaching an average school score. Currently, in this immediate year, we serve Homewood Fossum, Hillcrest, Northwood, McKinley and Parker Junior High, and the I Can Dream Center for kids with special needs and cases request. So on these two bases, we're, we're working with the population of kids. The programs are enriching and providing state learning, all kinds of the out-of-school time. We recognize that as the district has grown, that that's really concerned, for the district as a whole, is that, you know, we've got teenagers walking around with nothing to do, and so this is certainly filling that void. And so we want to continue this evening about our categorization of class level one versus class level two, who are taking to partner, with the partner, you have a conversation with the leadership team and the pattern of partner, with the change of personnel. She was having a conversation with Dr. Smith, and so we've been categorized as a level two, which is seeking for us to be charged with fee. And as a number of public organizations, we want hopefully to be categorized as a level one, because we're in the same category as boy scouts and girl scouts. And so that's what we want to place before the boards.
Thank you very much. If you have any questions? Are there any questions?
So do you want to use space at Parker, or can you be more specific about?
Yes, yes, we'd like to, in a lot of instances, we're housed directly in the school, and so we would like to partner with Parker and be housed in, in the school.
What do you mean by housed? Like permanently, or just use space after school?
Use, use space after school and provide the programs.
And you say charge, charge a fee for the school, or are you just being required to pay insurance?
Say that again?
You said, you said this is the one that suggested that they would be charged with a fee. Can you be more specific about that?
Okay, so, so I guess, Dr. Smith, if he could help elaborate on that, I guess that the school has different categories, that they categorize, categorize programs and organizations, and then if you, there's a fee schedule associated with that.
Right, so basically, there's a class one, thank you guys both for being here. Class one, there's a class two, and two, the fees can be substantial. Such a class one would be, if the park district is looking to use space in the district, or if we were running a Parker club, put on by a Parker teacher, there's basically no fee for that. The class two, the fees are pretty substantial.
Right.
And they could go into, so for example, if you wanted to use a gym in Parker, South Gym, it's sixty-five bucks per hour, if you have a stow-in, it's twenty-five dollars per hour, so depending on children that you're running, there are fees associated with it. No matter the club, we do, we talked about this, we do have a million dollar certificate of insurance for a club that has to, or that wants, any organization that wants to use space in our buildings, and we do protect ourselves that way. I think this request is focusing specifically on being identified as class two and not class one.
Right, right, yes.
And then, if we don't get back to it today, it's because, you know, it's not on the agenda, and so we have to.
That's fair, I just wanted to.
I don't know, we're, we're not ignoring you, but just have to.
Yeah, no, I completely understand that across there.
If it's okay, I'll gather some additional information and reach out to this people.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, thank you. Item number four, which is the consent agenda. I'd like motion please to approve the consent agenda. Item listed below, which includes school supplies, donation, as well as local property, curriculum, and technology. So I could be a second, second, factor in.
Oh, I was, I was looking to appropriately attend and discuss it all.
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Briggs?
I have a quick question.
No, no, please, yes, tell.
So I just wanted, the donation is from Home and Disposal for the donated school supplies, of a total value of?
Four hundred dollars? Four hundred dollars to be used as, I think, as the individual fit for supplies, right? I don't think it was school-specific, is that correct?
Correct.
Very thoughtful, very thoughtful. Any other questions, comments? So, Simmons?
Who else?
Briggs?
Yes.
I agree?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Flackman?
Yes.
Paredes?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion is passed. Next item, information, action items only, the first item up, the building school improvement plans. Sorry, you know, it's the superintendent's report is not online, and so before we just pull improvement plans, let me do the superintendent's report, please.
Yeah, there's no voting on it, so we didn't add it. Just briefly, just wanted to share a few updates with board education in the community. One issue that we've been chasing down a little bit, that really connected to a lot of the comments, not only tonight, but we've had in the past, the House Bill forty-sixty-two. Specifically, this bill will amend the Consumer Fraud Deceptive Business Practices Act. That's important to us because it was filed by Representative Anthony DuLuca, this was on May thirty-first of this year. Representative Davis, Will Davis also has added his chief co-sponsor, particularly to this bill. What it does for us is it guarantees that dominant real estate businesses that provide ratings of what school districts have to use the most up-to-date information possible. That benefits us because if we are approving, we want those improvements in those aids to count as a rating on Zillow or Great Schools or whichever programs out there with the rating. So Representative DuLuca and I have called back and forth, we have connected over email, and he sent me the language that's currently in the bill, it's in the board's committee, but that was on June twenty-second. So there's some movement here, hopefully, I know these discussions started last spring, but we can get this passed in the near future, get those regulations into place that will help us as we move forward.
Just, it would be fair to say it provides pressure for them to use current data, and doesn't guarantee, but it is great.
Yes.
And just, if I may, historically, some of the ratings on Zillow were ridiculous. They were, I think, a kid who was five years old, was decontextualized with ISAT scores, which really just were a reflection numerically on our district where we really weren't doing great things. And, you know, it was just, the, the source that they were using just really wasn't, you know, really accurate, reflecting of the great things happening in the schools. So it was kind of the impetus for, you know, looking into this and say, hey, you know, you should at least use current data too, if you're going to create a school system.
Absolutely, yeah, you're correct. It's pressure, but, yeah, and show up the language on the team. Literally, we just have a couple of reminders. Tomorrow, we have a governmental meeting with members of local government from both Homewood and Fossum, we're hosting that here. We'll talk about great things that are happening, whether it's the libraries, the park districts, the high school district, what we're, what we're doing, and then really talk about if there are any economies of scale that we can create, any efficiencies, any share of expertise that we can generate, usually try to get together about once a month, to talk about what we're doing. You know, this is where events like the meet group are generated, or chocolate block, those sorts of things. So we've had good luck so far, so we'll keep those up. On October third, Homewood Fossum High School is hosting Cyber Smarts, which is keeping your kids safe from texting, sexting, and cyberbullying. Highly recommend attending that presentation if you haven't before, it's very well done. It's at six thirty PM in the South building. Hopefully, a lot of our parents, partners will take advantage of that event, encourage to bring their children as well. And then on October sixth, we have here Visitation Day, District one sixty-one. Looking forward to seeing a lot of parents out in the buildings, in the classroom, welcoming them with open arms, it's a great chance to see child's school experience and to, to be a part of the fabric of, of our school District one sixty-one, the circulator neighborhood school as well. That's the end of our report.
Thank you very much. Now we can move to the school improvement plan, Mr. Parker.
So just as an introduction, to, no, introduction.
Can I?
The, I have to say, starting school year, so these school improvement plans are in motion. This was the process of codifying the hard work of the teachers as they've had. Certainly, over the summer, they've had their school administrators, other school improvement teams working to put the plans in place, truly identifies the action steps that we take this year to generate the changes that we're looking for. But really, this will be the first step, and if you look maybe at thirty thousand feet of this process in twelve months from now, we'll be past this presentation by about three months. Because the goal will be to bring this, the actual plans over the summer next year, continually bring data, continually update the board of education on the progress of the schools, continually identify the steps that we're taking to get to more continual improvement process. I think in a number of cases, we present the school improvement plans, you know, in some September meeting, and then you see the school improvement plans again, maybe in June, but most likely the next September. So we really want it to be more organic, frequent discussion as opposed to annual.
I'm going to walk us through the steps that we took over the summer to begin our school improvement planning process, and then we will hear from each of our school principals. So for those of you who have been on the board before, who've been familiar with the school improvement plans in the district before, they look very different. We changed the format quite a bit, wanting to make them clearer, wanting to make them more conducive to a continuous improvement process versus that sort of shelf they've been putting in a binder, or that plan that's been put on the shelf in a binder and is never opened again. So again, we had a two-day data retreat, July thirty-first and August first, where we hosted all of the school leadership teams to go through their data, go through their previous plans, review what worked, what didn't work, what the research says we need to do differently, and spend time working collaboratively to start fleshing out those plans. As Dr. Smith mentioned, these are not plans that are done, they are working documents that we will be revising throughout the school year. Our goals are in SMART bold format, just as before. What we've added is having at least three additional monitoring checkpoints at the district level throughout the school year so that we can really exemplify that continuous process. And the building leadership teams will be meeting more frequently in that to review their plans. Is there any to get that? I'm watching, so maybe I'm missing up on the, but. So a few things that you will see differently in the wording on the plans. Each plan indicates, has indicators for adults and for students. So in each plan, you should see a few adult indicators for each goal, and what that means is what are the two or three instructional practices that the adults will be on the hook for, that will be monitored school-wide towards reaching our goal. We understand that schools do many, many different things, but in these plans, we're trying to zero in on the two or three that we feel like will be the biggest things for our job to reach our goal. And then you'll also see student indicators, and that's simply how we're engaging students differently than we did last year to see different results. So again, our goals are SMART, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely, which allows us to have that continuous process. And each goal is focused around the district, or the school's greatest areas need or can it, which you will hear each school principal will talk about. We ask schools to identify goals this year for reading, math, achievement gap, and social emotional learning. We changed the language of what used to be the culture climate goal to social emotional learning. We felt like that encompassed a broader range of needs for our students versus just being about discipline, or just being about student referrals, how are we embracing the full child and really reaching kids and their social emotional needs. So your schools will talk about where they want to go with their data. I'm going to talk us through just our spring to spring data from spring sixteen to spring seventeen. What is not included in this data discussion is a discussion on PARC. Our PARC scores are not official from this date yet, so we do plan on coming back next month to have a deeper discussion around our new math data that we've just completed, as well as our PARC data, once it is thumbs up or busy that those scores are solid. So this report here is the student growth summary report, and it's really small, I don't know if we can, we can't expand that, but, but the vis, no. Okay, we can. So the visuals on, on the graph help make the picture, so what this is showing, and we looked at this last year as well, is that from spring sixteen to seventeen, mathematics, the diamond indicates where, the diamonds here indicate the school norms and the projected growth, so where our students should have landed. The bar indicates the observed growth, or where our students actually landed in terms of meeting their growth goals. So as you can see, our kindergarteners and pre-grade students do not have data, but our first grade, first graders exceeded their growth, and second grade just bear. our first graders exceeded their growth, and second grade just barely tipped the bottom of the bar for their growth. Third grade met their mathematics growth a little bit kastic. So that's how you can tell whether or not our students are meeting their growth goals. We definitely want to dig deeper into why at all of our grade levels, our students are not meeting or exceeding their growth goals. Definitely want to take a closer look at grade levels where we see a negative trend in growth. That's a really important, critical discussion to have, understanding that math is not the only data point, but it is an important factor. Yes?
I didn't mean to interrupt, but is it not also worth mentioning that in sixth grade, the sixth graders taking a different test, I mean, it's still part of math for NWA, I talked to Melissa about this as well, but you, they literally are taking a different test. And so, you know, this is a trend that we've seen for years, and you know, I would also believe that this is something that you see in other districts as well.
Sure.
But there's always been this sort of drop in sixth grade where, and just to clarify, the growth goals are based upon how they scored on the previous year, is that correct?
Right, so this is the district level report, so as a district, this is how the norms are set for how the district in sixth grade levels put on the previous year. If you were looking at this from a school level, you would see each school's individual grade level scores. And you're right, that is a factor that students take a different test. I think the point for us is that we also need to then figure out how do we bridge that gap between the tests that they're taking in fifth grade and the tests that they're taking in sixth, so that we understand what the gaps are during the transition.
How do the, are district norms compared to national norms? If you use our district norm in this version of the report, wouldn't they tend to under shoot, you know, the yellow boxes, but they national norm on top of them, so they tend to be higher, right?
Yes, they do. And again, you broke this report out for individual schools and grade levels, and some grade levels, they are on par with the national norms, and some they are higher. But as a district, yes, they tend to be lower than the national. Definitely think that, again, when we have the data retreat, we look at all of these data points together and try to devise the best plan possible to attack those issues, keeping in mind that math is one data point.
And just to mention the greatest point though, so I understand the argument that, you know, sixth graders will naturally underperform, changing tests, but the fact is on the national norms, the data that math publishes, they don't show a drop in sixth grade, at least we can average all their results out of national.
Sure, right, so it's that, the difference in tests is something to factor in, but it's definitely not something that we can rest on and say, just, you know, this is what happens. It's something to factor in and to plan for, so we can look differently at that perspective. If we look at reading. So they tend to see more accelerated growth with first graders, second graders, again, just hit the mark, third graders did a little bit better, and then you can see the trend as the students go up in grade level. One thing to also keep in mind is that throughout the school year, and as we take math, we take math three times a year, schools will be looking at this report on their school levels and adjusting their plans as needed based on the results of these assessments. And again, we will have PARC, we have other assessments running records, we have other data that we use for social emotional learning that we factor into our plans as well. Yes?
Is it possible for teachers to see exactly the kinds of questions that students missed? For example, when high schools, for which I could work, get their SAT, their support back for their SAT scores, they get the test and they get the explanation of why these are correct, the students correct, and so teachers are able to see, you know, why on the first reading test, every, there's a, 75% of them, students is number four, and so that they can work around that data very specifically. Are teachers able to see specifically the trends of the exact types of questions that students just missed in math tests? Would that be helpful?
Yes, and that's part of our data analysis process, and that's part of how our teachers develop their strong construction. In your packet was also, in each school, in each plan, was the state added lands report, which is done annually, we do not have the updated ones this year since the PARC score are not official yet, but this gives more data, and when we come back and talk about our student performance data more, we'll be able to use the state level data to have that discussion as well. And hopefully have updated at another stage this quarter, 2017 to 15.
I have a question or comment before you move on. So I certainly think that the PARC data is not available. My guess is that the, the scores won't, we won't see a significant difference between the first year's attempt at PARC versus the last year's attempt at PARC. So I'm not expecting to see anything significantly different. So I do want to know, how will the district, how will we be looking at PARC data versus math data? How will both pieces of data be used to support the sense and to support or inform conversations that, you know, the district will continue to have over the course of this year? Because we, you know, certainly for as long as I've been in the district, we've always had conversations about, so here's ISAT data, do we look at ISAT data, do we put more stock into the math data, do we put more stock into PARC data? They're very different tests, but I do think overall, what both tests do tell us is that we're not where we want to be. And so I want to also make sure when we have deeper conversations, that we kind of having very candid and clear conversations about where we are, because if I'm just putting on a parent cap, if I'm sitting in the audience right now and I'm not a member of the Flossom community and I'm trying to decide, is this where I want to move, is this where I want to send my kids? And I'm looking at first graders coming strong, but by eighth grade, something's really happened. So there's a narrative there, and I don't know whether or not you can discuss the narrative right now, but I assume that you will be, but so part of your question, okay, leads into this narrative of the why, what else is happening? Because we've been seeing this trend for quite some time now, so.
Yeah, I think absolutely, just the first part of your question, assessments are only as useful as they are timely to us. So we align our curriculum and our instruction to the standards, and that's what we have to stay focused on, is that nationally, our students will be judged against how well they can answer the standards, of how well they're ready, they're very able to perform in each standard. Given that PARC, we don't have a result per PARC in an manner that allows us to react to it, instructionally means that we need something like math in order to be able to have that checkpoint assessment to be able to know how our students are performing. This is an example of that. We have preliminary scores for PARC, but instructionally, we would not have been able to respond because the story's already started. So we have to have something to plan with, we have to have something that tells us what we can do tomorrow differently with our students to help them improve. So they're both important, and as long as PARC is a state assessment, we can value that as a measure that we're being judged on, but math is really the assessment that tells us on a more timely fashion how our students are doing and how instructionally we can change those behaviors in response to math. We can change what we're doing on a weekly basis in response to how they're performing in math. But I think the focus really has to be staying aligned to the standards.
Can I just ask in support of Ms. Horace's point? So we have a lot to discuss tonight, and I don't know how you guys envision this school improvement plan, is any of the principals going to discuss it in between building? Or, okay, let's just save our questions on specifically to them, is that the plan?
Yes. Specific session of the plan? Absolutely, absolutely. And there's a couple of other pieces here, and I think this, I've had some individual conversations, all of them, also conversations that are important, we have to make a decision at some point about what is important enough to measure, right? So are we going to assess growth targets, or are we going to assess achievement targets? As Annabelle said, the beauty of math is it's actionable. You can give a math assessment and then have a profile on the learner, a teacher can take and say, okay, I want you to extend your learning in this area, here's some areas I can focus, here's some areas I can work with you to build you up, and then you can see how much you've grown. PARC is an achievement test, so that tells you where you are in relation to where you are. Math can play both, but gives you unexpected proficiency as far as its achievement, but it will certainly measure growth. Had a webinar with a company this week that does it, frankly, they analyzed all of our financial data, and they're coming out with a program, and a piece of software to do that, to achievement and growth data as well. So they hope to unveil that in the next few weeks, but really, I think what we want to find is really get down to the point of what are our main indicators that we want to measure annually? Are there indoor measurements that we want to use? And then we can really keep an eye on those as we move forward. Our school improvement plans, the district improvement plans, your title plans, you focus on meeting the targets that are most important to us, do all the, do we spend our money in ways that will help us achieve our goals as well. So I think there's a number of conversations that have come with this around student data, just the initial part of the plan.
Is there an instructional downside or even a curricular downside to really focusing on PARC and math at the same time? As I mentioned, there'd be, you know, I guess what I get from you, and I think we talked about this last year, is that, you know, we are, you know, we are about the standards and really the, you know, PARC is the direct what measures that, whereas math really measures, you know, how are you reading in, in, in math, which, you know, is great for, in terms of building starts, you know, having teachers use that data to make adjustments in time and fashion, but, and I think your, is your question, maybe your question also, do we need to decide, or are we really going to commit to focus on standards?
Yes, without much conversation, I would think we can rely on the standards when they are objective, as opposed to looking at one of the assessment. Depending on which group or that you believe, we may have a new state assessment in short than eighteen months. So if we can align ourselves to measure growth and achievement in relation to the early learning standards, we're fairly reasonable that those will exist into the future. And then we'll have a baseline where we can compare our achievement growth previous year, and then as we move forward.
Do you know whether there's any research that shows statistically, if students or district continue to improve on their math, inevitably you will see improvement on standard tests as well?
I'm sure math industry would like to take that, sure, they're working on that research, so that's, I can definitely look at what they have to do up there. I know they are definitely making attempts at making long lines to the standards that we can make in our system as well.
So in addition to the timeliness of PARC, my concern with making it any, using it in a significant way above, if you will, NWA is that it's so new first. They are still doing culture sensitivity by testing. It's a test of struggling, and I'd be concerned if we gave it more weight than it needs to, because the math is ready data that teachers are used. So I'd be worried if we start using it part as a major milestone for us.
I think, does everyone agree or anyone disagree with that? I don't. Just very. So we have a similar consensus that we would prefer to focus on math data than PARC data for the plan?
We had some research in the report because that's outward facing data, to wrap the information that we're guarding, the school report guards, but again, we talk about what a teacher can take and hurt his hand, affect the relationship halfway with students, that's not part of the plan. It's more of an organizational benchmark as opposed to, that's a type of user.
We'll let you get to it. You know what they're having.
So each of our schools will do a brief presentation on their successes, their greatest areas of need or their plan, and the pieces of their action plan, keeping in mind that again, these are not fixed plans, they're not static, we will be revisiting course correcting as we do. I'm going to pass it over to Patel McCraven at Flossom Hills.
It's an honor to stand before you tonight to present the Flossom Hills School Improvement Plan from that was Flossom Hills, and she's our local leadership team who are all part of making this plan. One number is here, so I want to acknowledge her, thank her for her work. Flossom Hills has many successes. When you look at our math scores and you look at math fall to spring growth, you can see in reading, our students range from 61% to 89% of students leading their growth target, and then in math, 59 to 94%. Typical growth targets are at 50%, so we're happy with that success. What we did is we also looked at our scores from 15 to 16 for fall to spring growth and compared them to 16, 17 scores, and we saw that we had an increase in reading of 4.5 percentage points, and we had an increase in math of 7 percentage points. So we know that we're using the learning content, we can't really, looking at the question analysis, so they said that I think we're talking about these points, but you can look at the learning content from the KNC, where the students are struggling, pull out those strengths, initiate a different training structure, focus on those skills for those specific students. Our climate of culture is fantastic at Flossom Hills, we like to do things in a positive way, and because that is a huge success, we use resurgent practices, follow the same goal 100. We have something that's called our care room, which stands for created from respectful environment, and that is a room that allows us to teach our expectations for our students, and we did a great success on that. So again, always focus on the positive and try and teach the students the expectations that we need. In addition, we use seven steps once a week for PKAS, that's something that we are in the US district. And then CHANCE was implemented about five years ago, and CHANCE talks about teaching the students what the expectations are for all activities. So the app that stands for conversation, what kind of conversation we like, how do I ask for help, what can my activity level be like? The app is for movement and then the phase for participation, and if you do all of those things well, then that should lead to success. And we think that we have had success. Last year, we had 18 major offices, there's a number for us, and we had zero suspensions. So we put all of those things together and we think that it worked on our plan. Having said that, there is always one proof of it. So our plan, our greatest area of need, we want to increase our math scores in the area of PLA, literature, and then focusing on vocabulary. Vocabulary was part of our school improvement plan last year as well, and we use things like朗读 strategies to teach vocabulary, we use interior vocabulary words, and we saw an increase, so it did impact it, but vocabulary is something that, you know, just teach overnight, the kids get it, it's something that takes time. We're going to have to continue to build on that, and you can see that that's impacting everything that our students need across the board. For math, math, you notice that doubles and operations was difficult for our students, so that's a lot of fractions and decimals and multiplication and division, and if you can't do those operations, then of course it improves those high level problems you suffer here as well. So it's all a part of that, you do all of that in order to reach the next level. For our achievement gap, you notice that the students who on math are classified as For our achievement gap, you notice that the students who on MAP are classified as economically disadvantaged, they're scoring two point six good points lower than your peers in PLA. So that's something that we want to focus on and that we want to use our luck point this school year. And luck point may not sound like a lot, we'll be using a smart process and try to make sure that you're using something that is attainable. It can take time to get that score. And then school expectations and behaviors for some of our students in that year's season of class. Some of our kids come in and they don't know what the expectations are in the school environment, and we have to teach that, just to teach our kids, so that's something that we also focus on. Having said that, our action plan. We want to work on vocabulary, as I said, in literature, and what we're trying to do is simply add more tools to the teacher's tool belt. Vocabulary charts, graphic organizers, using the word map, and then really using the multimodality approach to teaching vocabulary, so getting the kids to work out and act the vocabulary workout. Dr. Smith was in our building today, they did a tableau. It was a new technique for making vocabulary words, and so the kids are in a group and they're actually trying to act out what that vocabulary word looks like and what it means. And then by that, it becomes something that is a part of their vocabulary because they have ownership of it. In addition to that, we are using One School One Book. We're trying to focus on getting tasks into the hands of the students and the concept that a parent can use one book, whether it be kindergarten, the first grade, or second grade, or fifth grade, or eighth grade, it doesn't matter, as long as they understand the strategies that you're focusing on and the skills. So we're going to Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. And then we always have been reading night, and in the past, we've done a curriculum intervention convention, and this year, we're going to change it, and we're going to have a curriculum night. And that's the night where the parents will come in and every classroom teacher will talk about the curriculum, highlight and show actual ways that they can work with their kids at home. You know, Mr. Reyes was at one of our family reading nights, and he was impressed by this , that's the work he used, by seeing the teachers not just have fun with the kids, but actually teach those parents, oh, you can take this information at home, and this is how you can work with your child. Because we think that if we make that connection, we want to see a lot of benefit from it.
You're pretty fantastic.
Thank you. We are doing a book study on engaging students with poverty in mind. It does not mean that all of our students are at the poverty level, but they have some good suggestions in there. We talked about focusing on relationships, and that's one of the best things that should be doing to have a natural impact. They talk about how the nutrition, vocabulary, stress level of some of our students, which you don't even think about often, but all of those things do impact the student. And we think that if we work through that as a faculty, we may also implement some good suggestions. For MAP, we're using bridges with fidelity, so that means we're not skipping any classes of saying, oh, we don't have materials for those things, you know, we're focusing on everything, and that's making sure that we're doing it the right way. With bridges, we wanted to still focus on numbers and operations because that is our man, and then we want to use the number corners and the calendar work to put more of the numbers and operations into that, and then use the checkpoints, the big points, and the zone analysis to see how our students are doing, because that's one of the factors of instruction. We can look at how we're doing on those zone analysis and say, oh, this is where we thought we taught it, they didn't get that concept, we need to focus on it in more detail later. And then use flexible grouping. So it's not that a child, it's like a set plan is something that you do once, you could not shelf, a child should not simply be placed into one group and they stay in that group forever. We need to wrestle about where we move students based on their needs. As I said, climate of culture, we have a positive climate of culture, so we're pleased with that, and we will continue to use all the things that we talked about. Again, our care room seems to be the thing that is having the most impact for our students. Anyone can refer a child to the care room and they simply go and they learn the expectations and they work on it, they're practicing. So that's something that we think is having a major impact on our referrals. Having said that, everyone knows that life is great at Floss Mill's, the most good one here, that went to great, and this year, our theme is, because of you Miss Corr, and your graduation speech, it's all the places we will go to Floss Mill's, and we believe that we will soar. So we'll continue to work, it's hard work, we'll be leading our Hilton, and we'll find the best every single student there. Okay? So go sit down right now and say your thoughts.
Question.
Ah.
So first of all, thinking about this for a while, okay?
For all of your service and generally speaking, so I'm looking at the MAP scores, spring to spring, and they look fair, but however, so we, you know, reading scores, the charts we have here comparing growth to the school norms, and.
Can I have a picture of your chart group, just so?
I'm just looking at the ones that you sort of, you've seen, right? So for reading, we, it looks like we pretty much failed to hit our school norms or just barely touched them, but projected growth in most grades. And since those are just the school projected norms, that means we probably failed to hit national norms in all grades in the first period. So is that, when you commented on, you know, vocabulary, is that, do you attribute that to, you think vocabulary is going to solve that across the program?
I don't think, no, I don't think vocabulary is going to solve it, however, vocabulary is a huge part of what we're seeing, especially considering the kids that come in, and considering that we have to pull out, still, that's why I talked about the learning continuum, and I think that's the change that we've been doing more so, because MAP, we, we focus on teaching the standards, and, you know, we had a conversation about park line, about the standards, but MAP is more of a skill, so you can go in there, you can see what are the principles, and try and figure out what skill you need to teach, and that's what we've worked out with the teachers, and that's why we started to see some changes, is that we've worked out with teachers and looking at that in particular, and try and hit what those skills are improving, and so we'll do that in conjunction with trying to do so better. I think with those two things, the water, they should have a natural impact.
And I seem to recall, I don't know if last year, because prior school years, scores were from me, but I seem to recall that this is a substantial improvement, I thought the grade, part of it was pretty good. If I can remind you about that, that the growth for reading for.
It depends on the grade level.
And then what happened in second and fifth grade for MAP?
MAP, again, I think that before that, we had to focus on, second grade, I think part of it was the same conversation that you just had, about it's a different task, it's the first time that the kids are reading the task, and is that a distance to the task?
Part of that though is, I mean, looking at national norms, and we don't see it drop in second grade, and trying to figure out why it's so, we shouldn't see it, and all those kids nationally, they're taking MAP tests or taking the same different task. And granted, that's happened right now, we don't have the data, but it looks like, we have, what was that?
I think that we have to look at our curriculum and see if our curriculum is aligned correctly, and then again, we have to go back and get the learning curriculum for a lot of those. So those conversations that I had with Annabelle, I don't think about her coming to the city, you know, are we visiting somewhere? I think that we're now about to begin the MAP program, we're hoping that we're going to see better results, and I think that we need that with another PLA program that, that too, how it is out.
I'm just curious, what would you be doing with the study? So how would you be engaging faculty, and is it all the teachers or?
The entire staff.
The entire staff?
Yes.
So what kinds of things do you believe you do?
We'll talk about, they talk about relationships, and the importance of building relationships. You know, kids will work hard for you, and they trust you, and they really feel as though you can have their best interests at heart. And so the book really talks about honing in on those types of things and making sure that you follow the learning of relationships, the helping nutrition, and we just saw this our first year of starting the breakfast program at the student's school, last year we started in January. We have many kids who come to school hungry, so getting people to realize that, I think often people think, oh, they're just not doing it. And often it's not that they're just not doing it, often there's a can or there's a reason behind it. And I think that many of us, because, you know, we are old fashioned in the sense that you just do this, this is what you do in school. You have to wait breakfast in the morning because your parents say, my parents say they have breakfast in the morning, but our kids aren't coming to the table like that. So we have to open minded and accept those things and realize, there are reasons that these kids are presenting, some of the kids are presenting, how can we help them with what we have? How can we embrace what's walking through the world, because every student walking through it is very, very different? How can we embrace that, and what we see on the study, just that, oh, that's just the way that it is, shame on that child, that's not the way it should be. So that's how we're looking at using the book.
So then you're having these conversations with, you're reading it together?
Right.
Okay. Nice. Okay. Thank you. Before the, no, I'm sorry. This partner, can you just remind us, your, the research that you did on our new MAP curriculum, in your experience in the school districts that you visited, what, how long does it take to start to realize the impact of the new curriculum?
Yeah.
When can you realistically see the impact of the new, of new instruction?
Yes.
As it translates into testing?
Sure. We, we visited Lake Block for bridges, and they were also using CPM. They were newer to CPM than they were with bridges, but their growth or their reaction in terms of student achievement to bridges was that, they, they said they saw huge gains in, in MAP for MAP, almost like unbelievable ten point gains in growth within a year. I think that usually when districts adopt a new program, it takes a few years for the adjustment, so Lake Block might not have been, you know, that's one example, but they were very pleased with their student achievement after the first year of using bridges and had continued to move on every year.
Hello, everyone, good morning. I'm Dr. Smith, district personnel, colleagues, and community and people and crowd. Just thank you for the opportunity to share some of the great things that have gone on at Heather Hill. And so I'll just jump right into it. For some of our successes are, our spring to spring data show that our weekly growth targets increased by eight point two percent. And MAP, our spring growth targets grew by six point eight percent also. Fall spring data show that we were proficient in both MAP and weekly growth targets in our school. The biggest thing for Heather Hill is we have a complete coaching round, and if you go to our building and check it out, it's the smoothest start, I think, Heather Hill's had it for a while, and it's awesome, it's awesome to come to every day, to see the smiles on its face, when you see kids excited to learn, you see the new bridges program go off for education, as soon as plans began, they're excited about learning. But if you look at those before about thirty seconds, I just need to talk about why some of these successes happening and why it's important. First, we were able to also decrease our major fractions by forty percent. And we knew by doing this that we're going to have an increase in our minor fractions. And so we just did what was necessary to ensure a lot of those major fractions didn't happen. So why did this happen? There's four, there's four main reasons why I can say this happened. First of all, thank you for a lot of the teams, the members right here who, who assisted me in creating, developing the system. But those four things are, first, I was blessed with a great staff who's dedicated to achieving our students and ensuring we excel. So I just thank my staff for all they've done in this past year. The second thing is how I've been a community, and I was there about the students' growth, they care about the entire school's growth, and so they've been side by side with me, the staff has been side by side with me, they were very instrumental in the successes of Heather Hill. The third thing is the harm of curriculum instruction was essential to a lot of the needs to be met at Heather Hill academically. So we thank Mr. Crawford and Ms. Manning for all they did for Heather Hill this past year. And finally, I could have a better mentor last year, Principal McCraven, talking about all the nuances of, of, of District 1Q1 and how to be the best possible activity. So I thank Principal McCraven for, for the opportunity. So we had a lot of these successes at Heather Hill. A lot of growth, students are excited about learning, but we would not eat, not understand that there's a long way to go, and that we have just left base camp on our contact and success. So our model this year is academic excellence under construction. All right? That's our goal, right? And so we know that we have the ability to achieve greatness at Heather Hill, and it's going to take some time, it's going to take us being, making excellence happen at the end of the summer, right? Make this happen, we've got to make sure our policies, procedures, our instruction, our great teaching, our great methods for, for our culture become a habit. It's just not a one, one year turnaround, that we put those things in place, and I must move out of the way and just let, let it all get back in. This is a con, and what that means, say, we know there are areas for growth. So we have to improve our students' understanding of information, that's a data recital, information test, and reading. For MAP, it's measured, data, measurement of data, we want to improve our MAP, our PARK MAP scores, and we want to decrease minor fractions. Like I said, we have that increase, an increase in minor fractions in order to get that decrease in major fractions. And so now we want to bring those minor fractions down as well, to ensure that our behavior continues to be better. Just stop by the building, you'll see that it's, the atmosphere is just a lot of joy, happiness, and learning, so it's just been a great time at Heather Hill. So some things we put in place, for reading and MAP, we're going to be doing a needs assessment, using data, using needs assessment, excuse me, using needs assessment with the staff and find out what the needs are at Heather Hill academically. What that will try and do, that is we make sure that we develop our staff, pressure the others around those needs. Well, we did that last year, we started that last year, we're going to continue this year, it was very successful. I think the change in morning schedules, second semester caused a little conflict with that, and now we have that figured out, we can, it'll be consistent. So we're going to do that needs assessment, we're going to differentiate independent centers, we're going to use those corporate assessments. A couple of new things we're going to make sure for MAP is we're going to institute data folders, and they'll come out next week, where students will be able to track their own data and their own progress. We've separated folders by grade color, by grade level, we've decided now specifically what's going to go on those folders and what data they're going to, going to track. I'm a believer that students' ownership of data is essential to, to the growth, so we're going to do that. For culture, we're going to, we have, we want to make sure we continue with the fidelity of restored practices and introducing new restored practices. We also are doing a book study on how children succeed for our first semester, which talks about how stress affects students, as well as grit and curiosity and how those affect our students. I was able to, we had a first reading, which I think went very well, and we talked about the book, the first couple chapters of the book, and I was able to use my experiences growing up, being a child of poverty, and how that played a factor in me when I was in school. So it's a very in-depth conversation, a personal conversation about how we can influence our students. Second semester, we're going to be doing, I know you've heard of Good to Great, we're going to be Great by Choice, which is the second book, which I, which is my favorite book, about how to be great is a choice, all right? And there's some specific things that great companies do and great students do in order to become great. And so there's something that I want our staff to start thinking about, that we can implement and become great, but this is a con, and me and my staff, we realize that, and we're going to con, we're going to fight, and we're going to excel, that's, that's not an option for us, so.
I do have one question.
I don't know, I think you go first.
Oh. I was first. So can you just clarify the major minor fractions? Because you said that when one went down, the other one went up, so they, so what are the, what are the, what's considered to be major minor fractions? And the other part is, is it because kids act with one and start with the other, or just how you are holding them?
Yeah, so the minor fractions of it is like in costume, costume disrespect or defiance, like this minor disruption of the costume environment, you have the major things of just couldn't even find it, or multiple minor fractions, those, those are our majors. The reason why those things, because we went, we held students accountable to the expectations. And so by holding accountable, we made sure our Swiss data was accurate, and we were, at student referrals, we made it known, you know, what the data was, and we were addressing specific issues. And, and so you see an increase of minor fractions because our data had become complete, there was no missing referrals, there were no missing information. And so we saw that increase because we were, we were getting to the ground floor of the issues, and so we saw an increase in those. And that, by doing so, we're able to curb a lot of the behavior of students, which is called a deep reinforcement of fractions. So I was expecting to see previous school, we obviously that increase in minor fractions. Now, we just got to go with that. We got the team.
I have a good question. So two years ago, I noticed that our district had, I believe it was, pre or So two years ago, I noticed that our district had, I believe it was three or four different tools to measure student behavior across the curriculum. Heather Hill and Parker had the same one. And then all the other buildings had individual ones, which made me wonder, well, okay, if your, the tool reading is inconsistent, you know, how can, you know, we measure consistently? To what degree, I guess the question is, do we have a consensus across the district about what a major fraction is? You know, are there different steps? Have, what progress have we gained to be consistent as a 161 community so we can talk about it consistently across the district?
So we have, I believe we all use Swiss for our data before discipline. We all sat down, I know you did this before, but I know last year, my first year, we sat down and we talked about the whole design form and what constituted a minor fraction and major fraction. So it's hard to spell out by levels from O D R form. And we still have a little bit of title recognition tool to decipher. You may have a student showing disrespect that fully stops the entire instructional classroom. We have, we have a classroom instruction that can be just self-propelled. So we still have that expression, but we all use that same tool and spell out the levels of our.
So first of all, so thank you for your presentation. I'd like to mention this to the creator also, the quality of presentations of school programs this year, better questions for our starters. Thank you for that. So math, as a whole, your students generally improved, presented by achievement wise according to math, so congratulations on that. But you still have, you're looking at four grades that are in fifty, sixty percentile. Are we, are we rescuing our hopes on the new math curriculum and fixing that? Or do we have additional plans to deal with that?
Great question. So we, we do love the new math curriculum, but we realize that it has issues with interventions. And so what we've done, what we've done is we're making sure that the resources we do have for interventions, we're, we're breaking up, we're using our resources to get some of that math intervention instruction that we didn't have before, because we didn't have that, that, that of math and interventions. But so we're, we're splitting some time between some interventions and some of the math instruction. A lot of our specialists have pushed in during some of those times to assist with the instruction, with the intervention instruction in math as well. And so our biggest push last year was for manipulative, manipulative. And I think this year, with introduction of that, I think we're going to see a change. And so walking through the love of a school, you should just play and game, you should be really successful with another about the instruction. So I think you've seen more students focusing on that student-student interaction, the small student interaction. But I also think the changes in our intervention plan is also something essential, and that's to be some of those deficiencies that we have.
Is there a hope for it, right? Is there a particular goal to hit? So I know that, I've always told my children that any lesson I teach is failing, which is pretty well for talent. But, you know, where would you like to see that go at achievement wise?
So I shocked the staff and I pushed in last year. That's why I laugh. And I told them maybe go to eight percent math is insufficient. Right? And so we want to see growth. And, and that's our goal. Our goal will be eight percent. We know we just go to here, here, and then a growth, but we, we want to hit the eight percent math. That, that's our goal.
Okay. And then on reading, it seems, the data seems much more all over the place. What's going on?
I, I, I would say that we're doing, a lot of our focus at Heather Hill this past year is the number of culture. And I, and I, and our hope is that we can rebuild the culture and create the foundation that the seeds of academics can stick. And so we're ready to plan this, the, the activity. That doesn't mean we abandoned academics, but I think now we're going to replace it when we have a solid foundation and we can implement those things. So we knew it was going to be a rock you were now, but I think we have the team and I think we have the skill right now to be able to plant those seeds and focus. So I'm excited about what.
So one good question, if I can piggyback a little bit, Mr. Nelson's math question. So given the data and what the data tells you, why pick just one strand to focus on? I think I heard you say you're going to focus on your goals and your measurement and data. So why pick just one strand or specific focus?
So that's the expectation for our GANs to achieve one of those goals. As a school, you know, it's across the academy, even our, our, our GAN for last year, we required to be that expectation, but our, but our actual data was, was the most essential one to be. But we know that all of those areas are not be happening. So it's just the expectation for that one band, but we do understand that there's a lot more that's going to be growth.
Thank you.
Good evening, Professor Smith. Your speech is full. So let me tell you a little bit about what has occurred at Serena Hills. There we go. Better than ever, right? So our math growth on N W A for the spring, our kindergarten, we usually expect to see the most growth in kindergarten, choosing the biggest spread. So we should have been in the ninetieth percentile. First grade was at eight eighty percent. Second grade was at seventy percent for math. Thirty, our third grade was eight three percent, fourth grade eight one percent, and fifth grade sixty six percent. We did have a little bit, we are watching the cohorts. And so when I look at trends in first and fourth grade especially, we are watching in the bell curve, especially those middle grades when they hit third and fourth. Kindergarten, you know, in K and one, we really focus on math, even in, even in reading, those foundational skills. And so a lot of our students come in without those prerequisites, pre-school grade skills. So early intervention, really double those English skills is what we're doing, and it seemed to be very successful. Our reading, at the end of spring twenty seventeen, kindergarten was ninety one percent, first grade was sixty eight percent, second grade fifty one percent, third grade seventy eight, fourth grade seventy eight, and fifth grade eighty percent. There's been a positive growth trend across the cohorts and within our subgroups. We are very pleased with what's happening in our cohorts and our subgroups. So we look at the tertiary placements based on our multi-tier systems of support. We're better known as RTI, as most people know. So our, the state goal in tier one is eighty percent, tier two is fifteen percent, tier three is five percent. We ideally want to try to be as close to those triangles as possible. So you can see for the building level in reading, our tier one was seventy three, our tier two was twenty one, and our tier three was six. In math, our tier one was eighty percent, our tier two was seventeen percent, and our tier three was three. That's exceptional. I am very happy with the teamwork, our exceptional teaching staff, the level of interventions and the monitoring that goes on of interventions, looking at benchmarks and those different points of data. Our thing this year is discovery through active learning. So we are definitely doing some guided discovery. We are looking and going deeper into our data, looking at data in shorter windows of time, looking at using the fours of P L C model, our professional learning community, asking those four essential questions. You know, how do we know students are learning? If they are learning, why is that? If they're not learning, what are we doing differently? And how do we, as a cohort, as a team, look at that data and make decisions to drive instructional practices? In our learning community, we are very pleased. We have over ninety percent parental involvement, which is really, really good. We are, we just had a beautiful fundraiser on Sunday. Our Camp Day breakfast was highly successful. We have more parents joining the P T O. Very diverse population that we're looking at, maybe more memberships is always nice, and that seems to have measurable impact as well. Our restorative practices continue to have a positive impact on our building and shaping our culture and shaping student expectations. Can I ask you a question?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
So your, your growth numbers there, is that fall to spring?
Fall to spring.
And then a percentage of students meeting their growth targets or what is that?
Yes, making it ninety seven percent, correct.
Good question. So the ninety percent parent involvement is fantastic. Is that being consistent or is that something that has grown over the last couple of years?
You know what? The first year, we really, we really made a diet out of it. We made it our, our goal, and it has been consistent, I would say. Just for example, we're working very hard right now because we took in thirty families already this year. So right away, we have started to have the P T O and teachers, you know, try to cultivate our new parents, make them a part of the educational process, giving them opportunities to, you know, partner with us. And so we're opening those doors and now we're getting, you know, more parents to shake hands and that focus out. So I would say it's been consistent and certainly looking to include as many as we can.
And how are you, what is the ninety percent? What are you measuring for?
Well, every time, we have parent activity days. And so there's multiple ways that students can connect with us. So every time parents come in, we give them a little survey and say, hey, thank you for coming. What do you think? So we keep track of those surveys. We keep track of the attendance when they come to the rec, how many parents have come through. We look at year to year, you know, how many, how many parents show up for parents' activity day at first grade. And so again, the teachers do a nice job of outreach and say, come join us, because there are active participants on those days. But we also like to see that at I E P meetings, we like to see them, anytime there's just a parent happening. So any kind of parent contact that they come in or we can partnership, we count as, yes, you're, you're a part. And those parents who have been disenfranchised from the educational process, whether through language barrier, we certainly make sure that we've added supports, like interpreters, to make sure that parents are comfortable when they, you know, when they need support. And that's been very successful as well. So our GAN, and again, I think that, Mr. McCraven spoke to this very eloquently, I think that you'll see a trend in vocabulary, which is, I think, not surprising. So what we're doing is we're working with Mrs. Crawford and we are looking at our curriculum. We are looking at what we need to do to address vocabulary. So we're going to look at the Common Core State Standards, especially through language on a daily basis. Students are tracking through goal setting. So they're providing, the teachers are providing them with little mini-goals and benchmarks. So we are monitoring that. We'll be utilizing resources based upon our S I P plans at the classroom level, which means that could be anything from interactive read-alouds, word walls, I should say, interactive word walls, book reviews. Very, very big on multi-modal instruction. So we, we address teaching and instruction to all types of learners, shared reading, and then we are really pushing writing across the content areas because you'll see that is a big deficit in some of the part that our kids have a hard time writing. Our instructional coach, coaches across the district have been very instrumental in providing support especially to our new teachers. So we feel that students have a bigger bank of vocabulary words. They're obviously better readers, research shows that. So our goal is to how do we model that at the classroom level? How do we reinforce that? How do parents become a volatile at home? So we're sending things out in the session as well to parents so that they know the words each week that we're looking at. And then we're using those words even in our discussions, in P E, in arts, in reading, I'm sorry, P E, art and music. Operations and elder grade thinking is our GAN in math. We will implement the new Bridges curriculum with fidelity. We'll use number partners, meet rooms, workplaces, the minute checkups, and we will look at D O K levels, which is our depth of knowledge in project-based learning. In the professional learning communities, I'm working and guiding teachers on how to look at data and how do we take that standard and if students are, are getting it and they looked at our assessments and they certainly at some level have achieved and showed proficiency at that standard, how do we go deeper into that standard? And how do we apply what we call depth of knowledge, twos and threes and fours especially? So is there application? Is there other ways that we can apply those standards and those skills across content areas? Project-based learning is one way to do that effectively. Teachers will come and share ideas and best practices around implementation, again, using our instructional coach, and then our social emotional, reduce physical content. And this was some fighting, maybe a few, but mostly just, you know, appropriate content, appropriate physical space, pushing, kicking, hitting those things in the Swiss data constitute physical content. We're trying to minimize that. We do that through CHAMPs. We do that through building wide expectations, reinforcing our curriculum site and stuff, and teaching students how to use their skills and problem solve. Talking circles, restorative practices is still very much a part of our, our culture. So Serena's action plan, just universally, DeVore talks about having a system so that students will be high achievers. So at Serena, we will utilize formative assessment data to guide instruction and learning, and some of that data to reflect on teaching interventions of student progress. We'll use assessment data to differentiate and then to individualize instruction when remediation support or rigor levels need to become more challenging. We will recognize and celebrate student growth, math student success, and ensure all staff have the sufficient training and follow-up support to address the kinds of student subgroups through the multi-tier systems of support. And then we will expect our learning environment to be safe, respectful, and in the future.
A question about the reading slide. In terms of physical contact, is that something where you're seeing a greater incidence where kids are new to this, the district and therefore new to the culture of the school? Or is this something that is their kids, their school?
I'm saying I think it's kids and their school. And it always happens in instructional areas, mostly on the playground. So, you know, games become, you know, tech becomes a little aggressive, football, we fans become a little rough. A lot of our kids, especially our boys, are involved in football right now. So, you know, you know, you're certainly telling them, you know, no contact. We have those kind of things.
If you figure it out, let me know. My wife will start.
We have a student.
Come over and.
Right. They need to play magic football and somehow they just kind of like break through the motions and it's just part of learning. It's part of, part of just set it and do, find a space and where to step up.
So what happened with reading to where growth was almost terrible?
Reading in fifth grade?
Yep.
The fiftieth percentile?
Uh, I'm looking at the growth for fifth grade reading for twenty seventeen. It's like two points. Very, very.
Yeah. I, so there's a couple of things there. I think that we taught with the fifth grade team, and I think that we needed to look at the data. And I think that bigger spans and looking at data in bigger spans, I think, wasn't helpful to us. And so I shortened that window. And I think differentiation, I think more student engagement, and I believe they'll tell you the same thing, using kindergarten structures, using opportunity for kids to learn and talk to the choice. But moving away from some traditional styles of teaching to really look at what is happening in our formative assessments and how to really, you know, drive our instructional practices from week to week. And I think that they would agree with me that different style of teaching would be different.
So your students are doing really well until that point. So it's just, can we engage them well enough and we're working on that or?
Yeah, I mean, you can look at, I mean, there's a lot of different variables. You can look at the makeup of the cohorts. I can tell you in one cohort, I had a big population of subgroup kids. And so we watched that, so we made sure that we push in, we made sure that we're watching those interventions closely. I would say we had talked about a lot of different things about instructional strategies, how we best meet a diverse learning group, and what professional development was needed around that. And so we were honest about the data and how we were going to plan and go with tech this year.
Do you have a significant English or second language contribution?
Yes.
Is that, is that part of it or is it by fifth grade? You already asked me about that.
I certainly don't look at it as a barrier. I think it's a great opportunity to meet some real, real realistic challenges, you know? They're all of our kids and I, we don't really look at our kids that way, Mr. Nelson. So I'd be absolutely, you can say, yeah, you know, we actually have some, some deficit. So, I'd be absolutely, you can say, yeah, you know, we actually have some deficits. English language learners do have that. But, I have a lot of kids that have different deficits in a lot of different areas. So, we watch those subgroups movement. We want to make sure we get at our students individually what they need to succeed. And naturally, our little, how do we holistically address their needs? And then, kind of that, I think that's the mindset we like to go ahead of it so that we're all, all students are being addressed. Because we all have deficits, see, all of us growing up. So, it's certainly an opportunity that they're-
So, I was excited to see the ninety percent for parental involvement. That's awesome. So, thank you for sharing that. How, do you think that's sustainable? Has that, you typically been your level of involvement that's exceptionally high?
You know, prior to coming to the district, there was not a lot of parental support at all at Serena. So, one of the things that we decided we were going to do with our building year shift is that we got to own our doors. We got to invite, we got to make it a family. We got to partner with parents and extended families, whatever that looks like for our students. And we decided that we were going to have a lot of parent activity days once a month. So, we decided we were going to start from there. So, we had parent activity day once a month at every grade level. Parents come in, they are interactive in the learning process. It isn't sit and watch a child. They're interactive. We like to see, let them know, be a part of twenty-first century learning. And certainly, now I have parents, you know, it's pretty big. And that's just, you know, just one, one type of activity. I would say that they like it. They like to come see it. Plus, we do, I think, a nice job. Our teachers do an exceptional job of communicating with our parents. We don't just reach out when there's problematic issues, but we certainly know that we have to build, we have to be strength-based. So, we try to reach out all the time and say, your child did an incredible job today. We have teachers who have this, they phone home and say, pick up the phone. Call your mom and dad at work. You just did a great job. Let's do a shout-out. So, they're doing all kinds of little creative things where it's not like, you know, always when there's behavioral issues.
I think, I think pancakes have too.
Pancakes.
I do have one quick question. So, the, so this is spring to spring data that we're looking at. So, the fifth graders that Mr. Nelson was just referring to are now our sixth graders at Parker. Are we, are we, or is there a way for us to look at growth and achievement by students based on how they were performing in, from the elders who they came from?
The cohort-
I guess, like, how do we look at that specific cohort?
How are they transitioning to Parker by school, right? Is that, how are they transitioning to Parker by school?
Yeah. So, I mean, I'd like to see what the spring to spring data will look like for those fifth graders that just transitioned over to Parker.
And I think more importantly, it's important to see those students who have been getting interventions. I mean, interventions have been very successful for those students. And what kind of support does our use when they make that transition?
Right. So, how can we know if interventions are working unless we are looking very specifically at that cohort meeting over from Serena in this upcoming year?
Yeah. And we talk openly in our staff meetings, like, right now I have an exceptional fourth grade cohort. We watched this cohort for the last two years. It's still really, that cohort is really strong. So, we know, we talk about, hey, you're inheriting a great cohort. So, you know, what is it? How, we had to make sure that rigor is there. We got to make sure what those levels look like. We almost have to break them down at the cohort level to say, look, this is, this may be a cohort that really needs a lot of additional support. There's a lot of, you know, for like example, first grade, they need to be aware of this right now. There's a lot of really basic things and foundational skills we're trying to hit. So, sometimes the interventions will change. Sometimes, we have to look at different research-based, you know, supplements that best meet the needs of that type of cohort, that the kids in that cohort.
I think breaking it down, I mean, especially for those incoming sixth graders, because I think if we're engaging in reflective learning or if you have a discussion about what's working and what's not, it would be helpful for you guys to know if what you implemented in that fifth grade year stuck in sixth grade year and continues to stick. I mean, obviously, you can look at the data at Parker and make some assumptions that there are a lot of lessons that can be learned in terms of what worked and what didn't if we are tracking, if we're able to track by cohort.
So, we're doing that articulations in our morning meetings. So, now we're going to be with the grade level above, the outset of the grade level below. So, what we look at, what is transitioning? What are some of the trends that we're seeing all through the year? So that when we know before the end year, what do the resources need to look like? What curriculum best meets the needs of those kids? And that's, the data has to support that. So, we go back into the data analysis and look at that. So, it's ongoing conversation, you're right. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
How are you doing? I'm not really great with these.
A bad expression.
Just every show.
Okay. So, I want to start with Western Avenue's assesses. So, up here, the slide has first grade features. In terms of comparing our data from two thousand fifteen and sixteen to two thousand sixteen and seventeen. So, what we can see here, that was pretty significant, was our first grade for end of EVA. We had a really sharp increase in students that were meeting their growth target. Followed reading and math. We saw an increase of fourteen percent of students meeting their growth target in ELA. And twelve percent of students meeting their growth target in math. My concern for Western Avenue, and I was looking for data for both reading and math, is that while our students in all grade levels are outgoing national norms, we still have students at every single grade level who are not meeting their respective growth target until fall to spring. For me, that's a concern that's impossible because what that means when students not meeting their growth target, you're seeing a drop in percentile. And if you continue that drop in percentile, it's maybe progression at a level you see that they fall more behind with years of national norms. So, while our students are leaving Western Avenue, I have a couple of numbers that I wrote down. We look at our fifth graders, for example. Our fifth graders are leaving Western Avenue. Our average RIT for our outgoing fifth grade students is two twenty-eight, one nine. That level compared to national norms for two thousand fifteen for end of EVA from that is equivalent to, I think, the eighth grade one. Same thing for reading. Our kids are leaving Western Avenue. This last class left that being two twenty-one point eight. National norm for ninth grader is a two twenty-one point nine. So, our students are leaving Western Avenue well above the national norms, which is great. But, I think in terms of improvement and where reading is where the school is for each student to really focus on meeting their individual growth target. Because we have students who are so high in general in school, that means that we really have to be creative in terms of how we're doing it and what we're doing to be stellar in that. So, I think that's a discussion that I'm really excited to have with my teachers this year. I think that it's going to take a lot of shifts in terms of our mindset and how we approach our instructional instruction, how we teach, but definitely it's achievable. So, greatest area to me, reading, math, and achievement gap. So, for reading, and this is not anything that's new. Our students are very well in reading, informational text, and literature. Our struggle is vocabulary. What I find to be very interesting, and one of those John Hattie's work, he did a better analysis for a thousand studies of like, what drives student achievement, right? And so, one of the biggest things that we talk about, exit, someone who hears exit is actually vocabulary. So, it's interesting that our students are doing well in reading, yet these children are struggling in vocabulary. I think for our school, for Western, teaching vocabulary in isolation, you know, whether it's like learning a word and knowing a definition, that's not the direction I want our teachers to take. What I want our teachers to do this year is really focus on vocabulary used within context. So, knowing, you don't know that vocabulary learning is within the context of informational text or even literature or culture. And it's a word that you don't know. What are the strategies that when teaching kids, try to figure out what those vocabulary words are? That's what I want to focus on this year with my teachers and my kids. In terms of mathematics, our greatest area to me is nothing but video. So, when you look at a student's ability to understand measurement and different kinds of measurement, for example, length, mass, volume, time, money, area, all of those things, just kind of understanding in general of how to problem solve something when you don't know it in them and to figure out the farthest best way, you know, what the answer is when you need it. For students being able to take a problem that, you know, there might be many things they are not sure of, but figuring out what they do know and then being able to bring that into your students, you know, explain their need, that's what we want to focus on this year with measurement and data. In terms of the achievement gap, we see that there is an achievement gap within multiple suburbs, students at Western Avenue. So, we see differences between low-income students versus low-income students. So, we see differences in African-American students versus non-African-American students. We see differences in special ed versus non-special ed. So, we see differences in subgroups across the border. I think for our school, the biggest thing is that we want to see ages from all of our kids, no matter what subgroup we follow, and we want it to be a candy. So, when you look at our action plan and what we're going to be focusing on this year, the biggest shift that can stay from reading is wanting to do an emphasis on using the text level reading and not just speaking. So, in the past, our teachers have really looked at Laxile scores. We have a group of students supporting the Laxile guided reading groups. This model construction is really important. It's where we target students way to bad. When you look at Laxile, Laxile, it's a math app, a formula, it's one of the metrics that we need. It's, you know, it's one way to measure text complexity. Fontes and Penel has ten different components that they use when they're deciding what a complexity level of text. So, they're looking at things like, you know, whereas mathematics might see like a pair of lots of big words in this text and they can directly figure out what the text is, Fontes and Penel looks at things like dynamo, text structure, syntax, vocabulary, all of their kinds of things, only figuring out how to have a level to the text. This year at Western, we're paying really close attention to those levels. We're using the Fontes and Penel baskets to create a sample assessment data for all of our students. And we're doing these here for the guided reading levels. We're going to use other learning records throughout the school year to monitor student progress. Something that our teachers are already noticing in the data that they're collecting for the fall is that with the Fontes and Penel kits, the guided reading levels are actually improving students a little bit lower than what our teachers are passing to the guided reading levels. I tell my teachers, this is great. Because the one thing that the Fontes and Penel kits have is they have this extra layer of comprehension questions that are rigorous and difficult. And it's starting to really challenge our kids and make them think. So, I'm encouraging our teachers to take our kids down this path to really look at the prompting guides for Fontes and Penel, to plan out their questions accordingly when they're doing their guided reading groups. So, for example, when we look at DOK levels during shared and guided reading instruction, those questions should be planned out ahead of time. Especially if we're really looking to move our kids who are in that upper quartile, like our seventy percent tile and twelve. We really need to think about the questions that we're asking kids. And finally, for reading, developing vocabulary grade level strategies. But, not within isolation. We want that within the context of reading itself. So, a lot of our teachers are looking at the words that they're looking at with students in guided reading groups and seeing how we can pull that vocabulary out and create a station where students can practice those vocabulary words outside of what their reading context. For math, we're looking at interfacing student underwriting thinking in order to solve multi-step and real-world problems. A lot of this has to do with students being able, like I said before, to break down a problem and explain the steps into how they can solve it. Math practice is a great way to facilitate this because it encourages students to use multiple approaches to solve problems and to share their thinking with class. We want to implement, we're just math curriculum with fidelity. But, at the same time, we know at Western, we do have this need where we have to really analyze our student data and look at a real of these and say, okay, we have a large group of students who are performing above grade level. What are we doing to accelerate those students? And so, back to Hattie's work again, where another thing that really can have a high effect size in terms of moving student achievement is acceleration. What we're doing to push students who've already mastered standards. And then, finally, when we look at the achievement gap, knowing who these students are, knowing who our students are, who are low-income, who happen to fall to below the fiftieth percentile, knowing who our students are in terms of how we're tiering them into our tier system for two and three-year interventions. And then, really monitoring, are our students responding to those interventions? Or do they need incident in time? Do they need that after-school programming to help move them further along? This year at Western, we really are trying to develop an after-school program for extended age children where we can be able to target those students who are not meeting their growth goals throughout the provided NTS services that we have during the school day so that we can really try to meet the needs of all kids. So, that is our plan. I think, is that the last slide? Any other questions?
You're the third or fourth person to stand up here and say that, at least for the math test, the leading problem is vocabulary. So, is that just quick, that's a critical problem there and it's a process? It's more structural than the school thing. On the, on the achievement gap, I know this and the other principals have also mentioned this in their, in their plans. And it's, I would just say that, you know, you can, for a long complicated issue, but across the district, you know, I would ask each of the principals that if you can't, if you can't address, we asked you some of this question. So, if you can't solve it here, then where is everyone to solve it? You have all this talent, you have thirty million dollars in reserves, and you have all these resources available. So, if you can't, you know, make progress on that, but in this district, then where else is it?
Are there any other questions?
Good question. In terms of vocabulary, is there a emphasis on academic vocabulary? To, so that kids really learn how to talk about how they're progressing academically in other disciplines other than ELA?
Oh, absolutely. I think that that's clearly defined in everyone already, because I think they're really developed in different areas. And it definitely helps particularly if we're looking at informational text. For students, they're going to need to pull from social sciences, art sciences in order to have a better representation.
Another question. So, what type of support, I could have asked this in any of you. What kind of support will your library give you in terms of the time that kids spend picking out books and balancing reading for pleasure versus kind of a push-pull that needs to happen with the reason?
Sure. That's a great question. So, I am actually Anna Pauls, who works at the Posner Public Library. It was maybe the first before I reached out to grant this position. Because I do agree, Dr. Hattie, that it is about, one, our kids like reading. We don't want our kids to go to a library, whether it's our school library or the Posner Public Library, and say, oh, I can't get that book because it's not in my guidance manual. Like, or it's not in my Laxile. We want to develop kids who love reading, who love. And so, what I've been working on is that Anna, and with our teacher, Anna actually came to Western and see two kids- and she did this with me when we were here, to kind of share with teachers, this is what the library has to offer in terms of books that you might not think are, you know, traditionally appropriate books. We introduced graphic novels that happened to be very complex, that's for students to read examples of vocabulary within notes, where, you know, even as adults, we have some of the words to be, to pick out what they meant just from the pictures and the way the story was drawn. I visited the library last week to pull up set of guided reading books as originally first kindergarten and sort out who are already reading. Anna has told our teachers, because the issue that we have at Western is we have students who are at these areas, they have high reading levels, right, but they're poor in grades, so a lot of times the content isn't really appropriate. So Anna Falls and I have been working together to identify books that are at that higher level, but are still appropriate for four-year-olds. And so that's always been really challenging. The other resource that we discovered in our school, which has been great, is Fontes and Penel just came out with an online guided reading level link subscription. They have over fifty-eight thousand titles so far, from only three hundred publishers that have actually taken books, so I can type in Charlotte's Web. Charlotte's Web is not a Fontes and Penel book, however, it has been graded by, you know, readers. And so I know that if I take the Charlotte's Web, the guided reading level are not above, so I know that if my student is reading at that level or on that level, it's probably a book that they enjoy. So I think that it definitely is a balancing act of fiction, nonfiction categories, but also pleasure versus, you know, reading for academics. And I think that as a principal, one thing that I want, I want my kids to love reading better than me. I don't want them to fail in exams. And this is coming from, you know, my own personal experience, where my parents, you know, that was like the one thing, he never said no to a guided book or going to the library. And I hope to afford that same opportunity to our students, because I think it's important.
Just one good question. Excuse me, so you spoke a lot about Western Avenue internal having a very high percentage of higher learners, so math and reading. And unfortunately, and this is the case in all of the systems, you know, we don't, we don't see what the trend is, and so I'm wondering if you know, or Ms. Crawford, if you happen to know, what does that trend, what does that trend look like at Western? When you compare twenty-six last years to this data that you currently have, has that number, the number, the percentage of kids that are in that higher percentile, has that number started to decrease, or it has flatlined, or has it increased?
I don't, I don't think I can speak clearly without any notes about whether or not the percentage is more high as it increases or decreases. I know for certain that in every single grade level except for one, our ability to use or to be gathered with names. I also know that in every single grade level, when you compare it to the national norms, we have a higher than national norms in a range of at least seven to ten grades.
I was gonna say that I think that's an option, where the more people find what the highest percent, what that higher percentile is, because that's a subjective document, right? So I think, to me, I know by the band, so we want to measure, and we're interested in starting with national norms. We can systemize that data, so you have that in each bullet, when it comes, just a system or review as opposed to generating a composite.
I guess my point is, it's not my point, comment that I'm trying to make is that I don't, we don't see what the trend is, and so where does the data point start? It's almost as if we, each year, each year, we look at it as a new year versus looking at it from last year, the past three years, just so that we can see what the trajectory has been.
Sure. And Dr. Hurd was actually, we were talking about this a couple days ago, and I said, you know, I'm interested, because I can only see that in my computer until 2012. I can't see anything before that, and Dr. Hurd was like, oh, we should have closed our kind of course room, so you can see that launch of new data, just kind of see, you know, of course, I was in 2012, but maybe 2012, prior to that, we closed with golden years. What would we do in two thousand and eight, those years versus what we're doing now? So I think that's definitely something that's worth exploring, and that I know that my boss supports.
I can answer any questions.
Yeah, because you have to take it.
Yeah, well, I don't have to meet you, I mean, there's...
In general, the, in general, at Western Avenue, performance has been consistent. There's been a slight achievement, you know, noticeable, but not huge, didn't achieve it starting in 2012. And these last, you know, the general this year's reports are slightly better than last year. The district-wide, there's more significant downward trends starting in 2012. And I'm not suggesting that the data indicates that 2012 was a key day, we should try to reduce. Plenty of problems with 2012, but, you know, as a whole, the district went on a fairly steep downward trend for a couple of years, and then sort of leveled out and maybe bumped up a year and kind of stayed. So the math data I have, and there's like weird gaps in it, but that's just a trend over the last couple of years.
When was Common Core implemented or adopted?
I'm not sure when this district picked it up, but 2010 is... It was available 2010, this district probably 2011.
So that, I'm certain, has something to do with the data. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, Mr. Punter?
Stretch breather. Well, good evening. Thank you for having me. I do want to say, well, they are APs and they're helping developing the plan, and also our teachers that was on the committee to help us develop this one. And just on behalf of the Parker leadership team, I'm happy to present our plan for, will be Parker Four. At Parker, our goal is to foster love for learning in our students while preparing them to lead in our global society. As a principal of Parker, I want Parker to be a place where staff and students love to come, because they feel valued and challenged to do their very best in a nurturing and safe learning environment. And so as a team, we came together and we reviewed our data. And so we just want to share some highlights as far as from the data. And even before we did, to the data, we do recognize that we did not show the growth in which we wanted to show, but these are some important facts to note. All three grade levels exceeded the national median RIT score in both reading and math. And in both reading and math, the seventh grade cohort of students increased their percentage of students meeting their growth targets from previous years. So looking at, not this last year, the sixth grade, but the year before that, there was significant growth in the percentage of students meeting their growth targets. And you see from fifteen percent to fifty-eight percent, from thirty-eight percent to fifteen percent. So based on the data, we picked three areas to target, and that's increasing the sixth grade math scores in the area of statistics and probability, increasing the percentage of students meeting their growth targets in both reading and math, and then creating a positive school climate and culture. And so what's the plan as far as to address these needs? So first, to increase the number of students meeting their growth targets in math, we are very excited to implement the new math program, the CPM, and that's going well for us. And again, we're looking to implement with fidelity, and also looking to provide extra support for those students that need. We're excited about the opportunity to collaborate with HF and other surrounding middle schools to share resources and ideas about high-quality math instruction. And we're excited that our math teachers will continue to offer professional development. We will also, this year, implement where students will complete a self-reflection after each assessment to help foster a growth mindset. Grade level homework help will be provided on three days out of the week. And we will have targeted math support and enrichment to provide all students the help and support they need. We often see we provide help for those students that are struggling, but when you look at math and wanting to be able to meet your growth targets, we need all of our students to grow, and so we want to be able to provide that help for all of our students. And then also, we have one day will be dedicated to math lessons and activities during our enrichment time. So next, as far as to increase the number of students meeting their growth targets in reading, we will utilize an MDA, a penetration system, in both ELA and also social studies, and this aligns with what they're doing at HF, as well to increase students' comprehension. Students will be conferencing and also writing about their reading. And again, in our structured enrichment time, we have a time dedicated or a day dedicated as far as for students, just to be able to read. And they'll be able to bring in books that they are interested in. And so our gap, you saw it in the first slide that was presented, it's our sixth grade math. And so that's what we're targeting out of resources as far as to be able to help and support. And so again, we'll have targeted math instruction based upon students' RIT scores to be able to help and support them in the area of statistics and probability. And then we'll have after-school math help and also enrichment programs for students. Our last goal is around the social-emotional learning. And so to accomplish this goal, we'll look to have, we'll have weekly lessons around social-emotional learning based upon the needs of our students. We will also implement PDIS, in which we will have quarterly rewards to celebrate students making good choices and honoring our learning environment. We will teach and model expectations throughout the year, not just as far as in the beginning. We're happy to be able to utilize the resources in the district to help us around restorative justice practices. And throughout the plan, we mentioned our enrichment schedule. And so in the past, enrichment was basically used as far as for science study hall. And so we noticed in our SWISS data, that's a lot, that's where a lot of our behavior challenges came during that time, and so we want to provide some structure for that, but then also address the academic needs in which we have.
Yes, so you're saying that there's a lot of SWISS data incidents that happened in study hall? Was it was less structured, or, okay, so then...
That's our...
Those previous?
Correct.
Okay, so looking forward, we have a plan that's wrapped around having more structure and more adult interactions, is that referring or...
Correct, and having an active focus.
Okay, okay. And is this something that happens during the day, or is this also tied to after-school or before-school as well?
So the enrichment period, the period that we have which is in the day, we will also have support as far as after-school, but the enrichment is everything. So we have set aside our Mondays, that's our social-emotional lessons that will take place. On Tuesday, there will be math activities, for the students who are in enrichment. Wednesdays will be homework help, hopefully it's approved. On Thursday, we'll work with the T3000, and then on Friday, they'll have that time to be able to read.
Okay, and this is during the day?
This is during the day. And so our thought is that we're increasing in these subject areas, at least forty minutes a week that we were not able to do live before, to be able to address some of the activities.
Can you expound a little bit more on, you said one thing that was dedicated to math during enrichment time? So not just math, and, and I want to go about reading too. Can you expound and tell me, I know it's during the enrichment that you do this, it's sort of like added time, but what specifics, I mean, are students able to come and get homework help there? Is it a guided type of setting?
And so what will happen on the day that we're focused on math? And so kids will be able to work on activities targeted to what we find as far as they need, as far as for that student, and they'll have them to go there to be able to assist. Wednesday is directly towards homework help, and so we have that. So that's kind of the structure, so it's going to be differentiated based upon the need of the student.
So you had, so, so I'm just, in my mind, I'm just picturing this when there was an enrichment study hall, or especially today, lots of things in place in study halls, not learning, unless you were really sitting there with homework. So I'm just trying to imagine it, just, just, just tell me here. I forgot, I'm going to say twenty students, twenty-five students. Do you have that person that is assigned there to that enrichment period, they have the actual data on each and every student, or is it a broad learning?
So it would be broad, but they, as far as the teacher, in which they had, they had the data, and they can assign them for them to be able to do, in which they can take them in as far as to work on the enrichment.
So in that enrichment, you not necessarily have, just on this, yeah, I'm just trying to understand this piece. Maybe I have honors, would I have honors hours to be sitting here with other students? So it's a mixture.
It's a mixture, correct.
Okay, but yet addressing the needs of individualized, yet a broad range, covering a broad...
Right, so whatever these students will be working on, they can visualize. And so it won't be, there's not a math lesson for everyone, TDA part.
So my son does Khan Academy in his enrichment, he does it based on his score of his assessment. So he just don't put them as well as Khan Academy.
So those ten programs are already...
Yeah, I hear, I hear you.
That's what he does, at least that's what he reports means. It's Tuesday, it's Monday, so I have to do Khan Academy, and that's what he does. I don't know what else.
So, so I guess what I'm saying in this, or just from, I'm feeling you, feeling you, Dr. Hurd, feeling you, Mr. Hunter, and then I'm thinking about what my child has also told me, too. So I'm just trying to tie it in where everybody is, so I can truly understand this, this piece. So there's individualized, everybody has individualized. So say, for instance, I'm a student there, and maybe I need a little help in the math, what we already did over, what we did at that lab. Am I able to get that help, or am I just simply focused on what it is that guided, that I must do for there without me being able to ask that question? Is that a good enrichment?
Sure, so I would say depending on who's your enrichment teacher, that resource might be available. We are in the process of trying to work something out. We're, say, we need to see your actual teacher during that time, or another teacher that... that has the qualifications to be able to help. And so one of the issues that, that came up, we didn't know where students were during enrichment time. And so we're trying to provide that structure. One, we're all students, I say, in town, but moving to a place where we know where they are, and they can also get the help and support that they need. Because again, this is 40 minutes a day that we want to be able to utilize to be able to help our students grow.
Okay, thank you.
So how many students are in the enrichment environment, no one's there? Is it a classroom, or is it, you know, they're all in cafeteria? Even, is there...
It's, it's a classroom.
It's a classroom, okay, so this is up, it's like, it's like a normal classroom size?
Yeah.
And so is there...
Very little less. And so again, what, what happens during the enrichment time, we have students that had BAN, that had choir, so some of those students are pulled out, and so allowing some of the classes to be...
Okay.
So those students that you just named, BAN, that have other type of activities, where do they have the opportunity to catch up or to give this additional support for math or for reading that's occurring during enrichment time that they're maybe at BAN or...
So the students that have BAN or choir, whatever they might have, so they don't have it every day. And so they are able to participate in some of the enrichment activities during the day in which they're not in BAN. We have some students that we, we feel need interventions that are also have BAN or choir. And so we love the arts, we value the arts, and so those students, we're trying to provide as far as the access to...
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So you heard a lot of discussion today about the sixth grade, right, or did it, or like, traction have done? Do you feel like you have a handle on it? Do you feel like we're still figuring out, or I appreciate the entire communication you, your teachers, financial feedback for us, where are we?
I would say we're figuring out. We definitely recognize the debt, we do not accept the debt, we want all our students to continue to, to grow. And so we're looking at RIT scores, we're looking at BAN, and then we will look to, to target the areas that they need to be improved, like the one which we picked. Probably in statistics, we have the least number of our high-level students in that upper level, and the highest number, highest number of students in that level. And so that's where we're starting. And we're hoping to make some progress on that, and again, we're hoping to be flexible to be able to adjust on their areas and target other areas as well.
So following up on a point you just brought to me earlier, are we doing a good enough job to transition the kids from, you know, their elementary school to Parker in the center of the city? This could be true, since we've done all this work, right, on knowing the kids and what their interventions are, and are we doing a good job of carrying that forward to, you know, with those kids at the Parker, or could that be contributing through the experience? Do you ever wish you had experienced?
To be honest, I would say there's probably a variety factor that, that playing to that, even having a better understanding of the change within the test and how we can target. One of the things which I appreciate about the conversation here tonight, no one talked about teaching to the test. And so if we want to go in and we want that to be done, was we're trying to educate as far as the whole chat. And so I think there's a, a piece in there in terms of understanding the difference between the test, in which they can, they can in fifth grade versus sixth grade, and then also the expectation. And so math, they think will give us a variety of reports to be able to go in and target. So as we sit down and we look at that all data, we, all right, this is where our students are, these are the areas they need, and we can begin to, to work on those within the curriculum when those pieces come up. But for those students that need some extra pieces, we're looking to invite them into our other services that we can provide.
And, thank you. I mean, I just, I first say, I, I think that what you described is, is a recipe for success. And as with all of our really talented building leaders and administrators, you know, I'm, I'm always impressed by the, the level of fidelity and, and, and the results that you guys have gotten, and thank you for that. I guess moving forward, I would also be interested in seeing, you know, is really looking at what, what really does happen realistically, you know, as kids transition into a new environment? And to what degree that plays into this little vividness we see, as well as, you know, tests itself. Have we asked the kids themselves in terms of what their thoughts are, you know, the transition, then we might better prepare them? And I'll give you a personal example. So my son, Oliver, you know, great kid, you know, he's, he's really interested in, you know, doing the things. He had so much anxiety about entering into, into Parker that lasted right up until shortly after his school, you know, when he got to see, you know, what classes he liked. So I, I guess I would be very interested to hear also what other kids think in terms of the transition to, you know, some of the things that they would want to pass on to kids who are moving under, so that, you know, maybe there's less anxiety than before, or shall we...
I agree with that, we should, that conversations about transition, sets them up different for...
Right.
So certainly not to any road, or some synergy to my commentary at those levels.
I don't have any questions, but I do appreciate thought behind restructuring the enrichment home. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that works this year, and then what the lessons learned are for next year, and where you will speak. But I do appreciate the time and the thought given to, to use that time constructively. Thank you. Thank you. I think that's the end of...
Oh, yeah, just one actually, back to the last one. I don't see that they have a report.
Is the question for Mr. Hunter?
No, not on the last one. The, is it, I... Social-emotional, I don't see social-emotional. No, I, I thought it was why, I just wondered what your greatest area of need was for social-emotional learning at Western. I'm sorry. I'm wondering what your greatest area of need was for social-emotional learning at Western.
Sure, so there, there's kind of a shift in how we're approaching that. So last year, the school improvement plan, the, the language was a lot about reducing the number of incidents in our building. And, you know, whenever there's a conversation about reducing incidents, I always, my red flag pops up because it's like, well, if you want to reduce incidents, I just won't enter these right up into the system, right? And so my, my approach this year is, you know, I don't mind, we have incidents, kids are kids, they're going to misbehave, it happens, but how are we responding to those things? And what are we doing in our response that I think really does speak to kind of the development of the social-emotional learning for our kids? So in our building, what we're doing, and what I've identified as our greatest area of need in the area of social-emotional learning is responding to children's behavior with restorative practices. So it's all about kind of the language and the dialogue that we use with our kids. I talked a lot about, about this during open house, where it's almost like there's like a, a questioning prompt that you go through, like, what happened? What were you thinking that happened? How did this hurt other people in your learning community, and then what can we do to fix it? So it's kind of walking kids through that sort of thinking, so that not only are you addressing the behavior, the child's actually participating in how you can repair that situation, so that you can get back to learning. That's a huge shift for our staff, we've never done that before full out. We've really looked at a lot of professional development and training with our teachers just to kind of target that particular way of responding to kids. And it's been great so far, but it's a lot of work on very hard, I think everyone else is. But yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. I just have one quick comment, I'm going to, it looks kind of like a question, because I know as we look at the transition from fifth to sixth, and we're looking at school there, I think this would be important, I know that it's probably already happened, and we want to refresh my memory, and, and to Mr. Hunter, because it is your first year being here, and then implementing this new curriculum, are there conversations, or is there a plan where we are going to be looking at the students who leave Parker after this year, the eighth graders, who transition over into, or matriculate over to Folsom Falls for, and actually, we are able not just to look at the data what we had, but to find out what parents or they were there, what they are encountering there, and are we able to be prepared for there? Are we having those conversations, are we getting ready to track that?
I think we're starting to, I think the team at Parker's doing a incredible job of starting to forge those relationships with our colleagues at HF. Dr. Manziel, I certainly had a lot of conversations. Everything that we're talking about tonight, I think, numbers are numbers, there are students on one particular day, that's fine, that's fine. But when you think about, so for example, those sixth-grade students, right, those current seventh graders, 50% of those students are in advanced or higher school. Our achievement's not matching our program, so I think that's part of it. But we do look at course catalogs, tracking students up through their APD scores, checking APD completion, A4 files, all of that data can inform what we're doing in kindergarten. We can follow that, you know, that chrome trail. And I think what we're lacking now is a piece of data, or a piece of software to do. You can do it all by hand, you can pull up all of those pieces, but we're trying to find a way to, to put in your parameters and answer that question tomorrow. Right now, it would take, well, a month.
Well...
She's great, she's great. And I think that's hurting our agility to respond to these issues, because it takes, there's such a lag between that data and understanding how our literacy program, or our math program, and what we're doing at Parker's of effective future performance. Absolutely, we need those indicators. And again, that's part of the conversations that the board will contract, what's longitudinal, what's short-term, what's a lean indicator that we want to track, which is for short-term input, what's a lag indicator that we want to track over the course of one year, two years.
And just also, right now, in the meantime, before we have a, a system that does it a little more efficiently, HF does send us, every time a student gets a report card, we get the results of how our former students are doing in their classes. So we get that breakdown of grade data for reading, math, and their advanced math and science classes as well. We get that, as well as J Card gets that as well.
So would you be interested in the conversation about which pieces we want to track from all of our schools? May I hear that? This is part of a larger...
I think that's, that's huge.
I think that's, that's huge.
Without a doubt, that's huge. Any more questions for our principals regarding the school improvement plans?
Can, can we agree in a general thank you to the principals for sticking around to all our questions, and presenting our plans?
And I think they do that excellently.
As I've had conversations, just running, all of our principals, I think, I've said a couple of things consistently, not only to board members, but also to community members. And I'd say this group of professionals, along with Chair Ling Annabel, and Robin and Eric Mount, we're focusing on the principals who are in school improvement plans, they really understand the science teaching. And they came through in their, their presentation, and they understand where their kids are, they understand where their teachers are, and they will deliver great opportunities for those kids, certainly. We should be proud to see the presentations and to see their, their achievements so far, and we're looking forward to the next one here. It's a really, really good group, we've trusted our children, so, yeah, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, steam update.
Are there more teams?
I know what part they need this night, but...
No, this is just a brief update. We've started some behind-the-scenes work on the steam lab at Suri. Now, we've had a couple of meetings internally, certainly, Annabel, and Cherya, myself, we saw, of course, the opportunity to do a creative learning system. We really specialize in steam labs and the curriculum to go with it. We have a meeting scheduled for October 19th, it's going to be at Parker, and we are still curating our final list of attendees, but they are teachers, they're community members, they are people in the fields of science, technology, technology, engineering, arts, and math, who can inform what we're doing. So we use them as a sounding board, we will use that to gather information, we'll go back through the work, print a pack, and work that way. Obviously, everything was still pungled straight through our Board of Education, but we're really, we have a pretty good list of all those people are willing to join us in a short-term committee commitment. If you feel that we could end up with a steam plan that isn't appropriate for where we are now, but where we want to be in three years, which is incredibly compelling. Any questions so far?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, review of October meeting topics.
So this was a request that was made, I believe, at the end of August, so this is our second opportunity to do it, we did it certainly in September, but these, this taking just me a brief look, and boy, this coming in October. We have not set the dates on either of these, but, and guidelines can change. So if you have additional items, please, on a speed, either Michelle or Steve, always encourage every other week to set the agendas for the upcoming meetings. As a matter of fact, tomorrow's agenda meeting, or I should say, October 10th, board meetings, agenda-setting meeting is tomorrow, that's another meeting.
Next item, safe stop.
School transportation is an issue that I think we're refining. But if, if we have a great area to do, it's our communication. Page, I think, has been looking for different solutions that we could use to track buses. Pam Majewski located Safe Stop, which did not come from Page. It's an app-based GPS system that runs on bus public. So that's a, it's a careful clarification, it's not real-time data, and it's not like you're watching your Uber, your app, but this would provide you 30-second GPS updates on the location of a bus. It's supposed to be incredibly nimble as far as implementing it, meaning we would have to provide our route data, they would work with Page, they would download it into their system, parents could download the app, I need to search for, you know, Folsom Hills Route 2, they would populate, and then they can begin tracking, you know, the arrival times, estimated delivery times, kind of times of the, of the... It is, also, when we asked Page previously about the GPS software, we were told it should be around $10,000 for the district. This particular solution is at 2,200 all-in, it's, we're charged per site, it's about 200, you know... Some knowledge per school. So the purpose of this conversation, if we want to move ahead, select a few parents and run a short pilot, see if it's worth moving forward with in a larger scale, how do we want to respond to this? This could be, this could be a good option.
Is there a monthly, like a monthly cost, a monthly maintenance?
It's an annual cost to the district. There's no parent cost at all.
No, I'm saying is there a monthly, any type of monthly expenditure, like?
Nothing.
Not the kids, not the?
No.
Okay. So I understand it's a thirty second delay on where the bus is.
Correct.
Is there a fee to do a test of this?
No, they would run a pilot for free.
Is the twenty-two hundred the something that would be recurrent every year or would that be?
It'd be an annual cost because the process is to download. We download the app, so and I'm not sure if they would run the software, PAGE. They'll take all the data after PAGE routes. We do registration, PAGE routes the kids. They'll pull that data, put it into their software, and then generate Folsom Hills Two, Western Avenue Sixteen, Parker Fifty, whatever. Those routes are based on the updated information. Does it change if you move in or out?
Do we know if anyone else is using the particular software with PAGE?
No, no.
Are we worried about? That's using it? Or just anyone? Do we know of any other districts that are using it?
What are the steps under experience with that?
Well, I'll tell you, their Apple App Store rating isn't great because people want real time data. They want, I want to physically, the first cut on the first move, you know, I missed the bus. I'm sitting on the couch.
Well, that is, well, that is a user experience problem, right? They're going to assume it's real time.
Correct. So that's why I wanted to clarify that nuance between, you know, bus updates and real time information because there's a difference.
Thanks. They could do real time information. The product is designed not to have real time information proven for security, so I forget.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I can certainly find out the particular software. Who's currently using PAGE? Who's using it in general? And I can bring that back.
I'm sorry, Dan. Did you say that there was a cost to parents to download this? So this is strictly something that the district could do for, and then parents could download for free?
Yeah. I would say, you know, the only negative we'll probably find this with a number of them is we can't opt parents in automatic. Like they have to physically go out, download it, sign up. We can try to push it out as much as we can. We can run a pretty good marketing campaign to do that. But, you know, like the bus bulletins next year, you have to opt out if you don't want. Otherwise, everyone will get it. You know, that's interesting. A blanket with this app, they'll have to actively download the app and sign up. So would essentially, do you want me to put together what a small pilot could look like and then answer these additional questions?
Yes. I would give you the twenty-two hundred and ten thousand. I'm sort of.
Twenty-two hundred is incredibly.
At ten thousand, so I was sort of unimpressed with the ten thousand dollar price and was thinking about it. And I don't know that that would be worth it, but a twenty-two hundred, sure.
That's a big difference in, yeah.
And the pilot's free. So at the very least, we're just out a little bit of time. But if this was an effective communication tool, our parents, it would handle seventy-five percent of the issues.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Next item on the agenda, monthly financial report.
It was asked that we there's no, there's no action. It's just an information item. We want to bring, we were asked to bring the monthly financial reports in this format as an agenda item along with payroll and bills. Just if there are any questions, since we've had an opportunity to review the documents. August financial report, right? It was an additional, so there was the coachings and then the group's financial.
It makes sense.
I guess maybe. She's got, they have or docs up to date in their software.
Yes, they do.
Hers tablet's still running the old group.
Ah, okay.
And I'm, so we'll figure it out.
The expert.
So it's not a call.
It is not. No, no, they did that overnight. They did that overnight.
So are there any questions regarding the financial report? Next item on the agenda is item F, approval of the FY eighteen budget. And I please have a motion to adopt the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Can we have a discussion, please?
Absolutely. Are there questions?
Yeah, concerns. I do have a question. I would look forward, first of all, let's say, Fran, you do an excellent job of putting this together. And I know it's a lot of hard work. So when I'm asking a tough question, we've got an attack on you. Just, you need to know the answers. I know when I looked at this, and just remind you, because I couldn't find it again. We, if I'm not looking, if I didn't see it correctly or receive it correctly. Remind me about the interest we receive off of reserves. Is there interest that we receive off of reserves?
Absolutely. And that is the money that Dr. Prossy invests on behalf of all of the districts within Bloom. So when he comes and uses it, he will report to you on what's going on with his office. These are the ones that are investing for the most part. And that interest is based on power revenues through his office. So he, he invests for all the districts in total and then breaks out the interest by the two districts.
Do you, I'm going to ask a bigger question because I thought I saw it here, but I don't want to hold the number I thought I saw. Do you offhand know what that is? Just offhand?
The total number?
That we need, that our interest.
Was it like a hundred and, I think it was like a hundred and four thousand?
Yeah, I thought I saw that.
What are we looking at? I'm estimating. We're estimating about, no, a little more, like four hundred thousand dollars.
So about four hundred?
Probably a little more than two percent. He's not taking much risk.
Yeah, clearly they're not, under law, it's not allowed to take on a whole lot of risk.
Is there anything written that I may not be aware or anything? Is there anything, I guess, I'm asking this question. Could we use that interest to help offset or to pay for capital improvements to help offset that?
The money, what of the interest is included in revenue? So it's already captured, though. Okay, all right. So with that in mind, we still come back out, and I just want to make sure I understand this entire picture because it's important.
We come out even, you know, when we talked about the capital improvements, the structure project. We come out at a one point five million dollar deficit. However, in our reserves, we are up. We are on a positive. We're up. I forget what the number was. Was it like twenty-four or something?
Twenty-four, KJ, when you had the operating funds in total, it was just shy of thirty million.
Okay. So why, and this is Rob, no, why not pay for that power reserves?
Actually, that's not your margin.
Yeah.
But why do we end up at a one point five million dollar deficit?
In one, in the one year, just looking at the amount of money that comes in in one year and the amount of money that goes out in one year. You have a one point five million dollar deficit. But you have, even after that deficit, that one point five comes out of your savings, you're still left with close to thirty million. So we are taking that money out of your cash reserves.
So then why is it, so why is it recorded? I'm just seeing for the second, what I'm seeing, if we have a recorder, we're going to actually move that money back home.
If you actually look at the state budget form, it does ask you for what your beginning balances are, fund balances, and what your ending balances are going to be. And the state won't allow you to be in total in the red. But it's using so that, that spreadsheet I showed you about the operating costs, it's taking a look at what your fund balances are and saying, if you didn't have fund balances in excess of four million, it would be a problem. But you have your balance of the twenty-four. So the state's saying, all good. Any more questions?
Really, can you clarify?
I mean, it's not really a question. I think I addressed it. You know, even at a compromise, if you were to, to look at this thing, even at one percent and not two percent, if you turn the levy, there are some huge concerns. We've got a lot of moving pieces to this budget that we don't have all the answers to. And it's just like you're budgeting at home. We've got to learn to take what we have and make it work. And to continue to do what we're doing in terms of the levies, I understand we want to get the most about dollars. But there's a huge concern. I don't think everybody saw the published budget. I don't even think everybody understands it. Or there are some huge concerns. If we can table this until further, until we can learn more about some more moving pieces here. I know I would feel better. But customarily, traditionally, continuing to have something just to afford it without really looking at all the moving pieces, I just think it's just not a good idea. And we're not doing our, and we're not affecting, I don't want to hear that we're jeopardizing our, and giving our children a world-class education. I don't, I don't want to hear that. Because we're sitting in a good spot. We have not levied over the last two years, at least since I've been here. We have some serious concerns and some things that we need to look at. The county, and I understand your presentation was excellent. The county taxes are going up and they're already. We have, and that's on the county level, and we have the, also the, what is it, the sugar, the solar tax. That adds, I think these are all pieces that are affecting everyone. And then, let me finish. We have the income tax that was adjusted, that is being felt. And I'm, you know, hey, I know people may be rich, but I don't care how rich it can be. Money is money. But I don't think our kids are in jeopardy of losing a world-class education. And if we look to learn to do more with this. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
I think part of the challenge is that the levy and budgeting processes are not aligned. So we'll set the levy in a month for next year, essentially.
But that budget, this budget is set on that piece.
It's also set on the year before.
I understand that. The other half, the other half of that.
Absolutely.
And that continues now into another, we're talking another year. We have people, and people have this test here for one hundred.
As we approach that discussion, I think a useful piece of information for myself and for myself and our community members that are over here. If we're going to consider raising less CPI for the levy, one important figure would be how much actual end of that kind of individual's tax bill. Say someone's paying ten thousand dollars in taxes, how much do they really get to save them? I'd go with that. I'm just saying, if we, if we are not prepared for that discussion. Because my sense is that in order to have a meaningful impact on an individual's tax bill, I'm not sure if we, along as a taxing body, can do much of anything.
It's also going to be very difficult for me to give you that answer. I can tell you what your total levy will be. I will not be able to tell you what your tax bill is going to be and yours and yours because I don't have all the pieces to do that calculation. And so that's going to be difficult. So I can say that we will freeze, you know, and we won't, we won't take one line more. But I can guarantee you that that means that your tax bill, even our piece of it, won't go up. It's going to base on what that slice is in the total assessment round.
Understood. But assuming all things are equal, could we at least get, you know, is this a five dollar or a fifty dollar, five hundred dollar impact? You know, but then there's a ton of something we could have to make.
Really, a rough, rough estimate, take the one sixty-one piece of your tax bill and take two percent off.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what I, that's what I'm looking for.
When you look at your property taxes, at least when I look at mine, over fifty percent, and that's, I think, being modest, destroying to our student. And that is, that's a heavy, that's a heavy piece. When I moved here.
That's about right. It's about, it's for HF two thirty-three.
Yep.
A ten thousand dollar tax bill should be roughly twenty-six, twenty-seven hundred dollars for two thirty-three, maybe twenty-two hundred for us, and then the rest is so close to half. But.
When I moved here, that was something my husband and I took in consideration. Our taxes were our best way that we looked at it. And I mean, and it's a healthy way to look at it, and that's why, why we can't. We also want to continue to draw people and not have people under the word to the point that we're going to turn this district. People may say, it can't happen, but it can into renters, a total rent, and then we face a whole other cultural shift and change. So just a lot of moving pieces to really think about and really to consider. And when we were saying, you know, we need approval of the budget, I know we've got some time to deal with the levy. I'd rather know, and I know nothing is guaranteed, but I'd rather know more of the moving pieces as we propose her in. Than to sit in half of it and say, okay, well, the property taxes is part of the budget, but that's a lie. It really is. It's part of the revenues of what's being considered.
Do you have a way to direct the effect on what you need tax paid? That you have to balance against your fund balance from there because you can take the fund balance directly to tax paid. It's a one-time deal.
All my questions have been answered the best that they can in time. All three of them. Any other questions?
I'm curious. Has there ever, what's the history for CPI? Have we always done the maximum?
We've always loved it, CPI.
We've always loved it, CPI.
Well, it's CPI, it's got a ceiling of five percent, but we never hit five percent since after March. So I'm sorry, Fran, remind us again, when we, when are you bringing the levy back to four? I will present levy October twenty-third. And then we have until December eleven. I'll need to adapt. I'll need to know earlier than that what we plan on doing because it has to go into the newspaper. Okay. Well, theoretically, actually, doesn't need to go into the newspaper unless we're going over five percent. Historically, we put a notice in regarding. So we obviously need to have more conversation about this over the coming, the next few board meetings. So we can discuss that and make sure we bring it back. And I think I heard you say, Fran, with regards to this budget.
And I think I heard you say, Fran, with regards to this budget, that a portion of it is, that there's some flexibility if.
The levy that you're going.
Decide to go a different way.
Yeah, the levy that you're going to be considering next month and into December, regardless what you choose to do during that levy year, the first installment is going to bill out 55% of the 2016 levy, period, that statute. Anything that happens then, what you decide to do, will be affected by the second installment, which you won't see until the 18, 19 year. So regardless whatever decision you decide to make on the 2017 levy, it will not change the numbers for the 17, 18 budget, it just doesn't. Okay. Thank you. Can we do a roll call, please? Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Simmons?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Ford? Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item on the agenda, approval of the Chief 3000. Can I please have a motion to adopt the Chief 3000 for the 2017-18 year as presented? Dr. Graves, give me a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Graves, any questions about Chief Blackman? Roll call, please. Okay, Blackman?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Ford. Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item on the agenda, approval of the Title I Plan. Can I please have a motion to approve Title I Plan, as you mentioned? So moved. Mr. Graves, it's 50. Any questions? Roll call, please. Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Ford. Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item on the agenda, 2018 teacher meeting schedule agreement. Can I please have a motion to accept the teacher meeting schedule as agreed to by the administration and Flossmore Education Association?
I will do, we have a discussion to start it while we talk verbal, I have a quick question, but I don't have to ask them.
Um, can we lead the motion first?
So moved.
Three answers, please. Questions?
Um, so was this, I, I just wanna be clear, I regret this, was this an addendum item that was later added, or, I'm just trying to, or is this just something new going into for 2018? Because I remember when there were talks, the bargaining agreement states that annually, we will sit down with the association and agree to how many meetings there's gonna be prior to the school day starting, and how that time will be made, based on when they get out for, it's two days, six days, and those kinds of things. So all this really is doing is memorializing the agreement under that area of contract that says, have a conversation, and this is what we agreed to.
Okay, 2018. Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Blackman?
Yes.
Caredis?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Ford. Yes, and the motion has passed. Next item on the agenda, executive session. I'll move that we move into executive session, matters relating to personnel, five ISLCS from 20-2. Can we add, can we, 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 can